Mr. Denae, would you lead us in the pledge?
Yes, Mr. Kachell, thank you.
Take your head off, put your hand over your heart.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Yes, sir. This time we'll observe a moment of silence, please. Madam Secretary, call the roll, please.
Shivi, Brekis, Zadra, Delgado, George, Jordan, Kachell.
At this time, we'll go to public comment. You know, one thing, I would like to make it very clear that I am the official ribbon cutter. I want everybody to understand that I am that. And I do control the gavel, in case you're wondering what I do. And I have a private bathroom. So there is a difference between me and my council members. No, I just wanted to make it clear that everybody understood. And the ribbon cutting today was just to show you that I still knew how to do it. So we will now open it up to public comment. And if I can find my glasses so I can read. David Sheikar. I'm getting closer. You help me with that every time, I appreciate it.
Good afternoon, Mayor Kachell and Honored Councilpeople. Today on your agenda, pages seven and eight, you have some very important legislation to consider. It's the amendments of Reno Municipal Code titles four, five, and eight. These are the so-called artist codes. You have these ordinances to decide, and you have two proposed versions. There's one version that was written by the artists and nonprofits to the community. And then the other version submitted to you by the City Reno Attorney's Office that was also looked at by your staff. And the staff did some long and hard work on this. Their intentions were very good. And the result was, in spite of the good intentions, there were a couple of things that we feel should not be in there that could actually cause problematic issues with the code. Specifically, you have expanded tattooing to be allowed on the city's streets, open-air sidewalks, and parks. Do you really want that? Do you really want tattooing? This is not the time to adjudicate the rightfulness of tattooing in terms of the fact that it is protected by the First Amendment, but not fully as the self-created works of other artists are protected. There are a couple of other problems that were endemic in the revisions of these. And they seem to be minor. There were words that were used on the business license to allow a proponent of the artist to sell the artist's self-created work. That goes beyond and expands what the Ninth Circuit appellate court ruled we could do. The artists, we've actually proposed a code that is stricter than that proposed by the staff. We've limited the size of canopies that can have the height reduced from eight to five feet for matter of safety. We've reduced the ability for people to erect canopy tents because they're nothing but a liability for the city unless they can prove to the city's satisfaction that there is liability for that so they don't fly up in the air and hit somebody in the eye. There's a couple other language, a couple other items of language that were included in the staff version of the codes that we'll be speaking of later on when we get to those agenda items. There are items I-1.2, I-1.3, and I-1.4. So please consider what we have to say when we get to that section of the amendments for these new legislation. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. Ronald Major. You scribbled a little bit on me, right? I know who you are. Mr. McGee.
Good afternoon, Mayor and City Council. I'm going to try to be real quick in this three minutes. I just wanted to address one issue up front. Between both city councils, I only know of two veterans, which is Smith and Carrigan in Sparks. Maybe we have a veteran up there, I don't know. But I'm the only disabled native Indian veteran running for any office in Sparks, Reno. And I'm a disabled veteran due to an Army football injury because I was a boxer in football. And Chief Pitts knows about my boxing career because the police are afraid of me. So they have me labeled as a dangerous handicap. Okay, but anyway, we'll go to the next step. I have a little action I want taken care of down on Record Street. This is going to be about the third month. I asked for a crosswalk to be painted on Record Street across the tracks. And on top of that, I want heaters put in down there. Them people are freezing out there, standing in line for food, to ride to the overflow, and all that. And the mayor can do that on one call, okay? The next one. Down there, I want to say the good, the over 60, the U.S. Gospel Mission, I went down and stayed and checked it out for you. Overnight, it stayed in overflow. I put my foot where it really is. And then I stayed in the over 60 veteran place, Gospel Mission. They only take six veterans a night over 60. A-1, they clean your clothes. You got to get out at 5:00 in the morning to have great food for you. And it rotates around. I think you can stay 10 to 30 days on that. See, I got 131. The one thing I wanted to give a little props to the prospective mayor in the future for having the guts to go to court. And I was a little disappointed in one of the comments by one of the city council that thought there was nobody running now worthwhile. I'm not going to say who. But anyway, I want to start a new thing in town with the police. Chief Pitts knows about it. I want the public to wave to the police, and I want the police to wave to the public. Just acknowledge each other. And they'll get more help from the public. They need help. Third, I want to acknowledge Kaepernick. They just come out with IQ test for all NFL quarterbacks. He was number one, third overall in the NFL of their IQ type. They have a test thing. And the last thing I want to do is I'm officially running for mayor of Sparks, March 13th. I'm the only disabled veteran with a legal license plate on my vehicle on either town. I don't know how many veterans. Do we have any veterans up here? Oh, we got one, I'm real proud. That's good. Actually, I didn't know that, I learned something. I know Sam Denae has, we already know that. I brought a guitar, last thing for him to do with Johnny Cash for us today. Thank you.
Take a vote on that, right?
The mayor has veto power. You will not sing. Marcy Cooper Schmidt?
Hi, good afternoon, Mr. Mayor and City Councilmembers. I'm Marcy, and I'm vice chair of the Senior Citizen Advisory Committee for the City of Reno. And I'm here to thank all of you for your continued support with our committee. Thanks to the funding that you give us, our committee is able to help seniors. And I just want to give you a quick couple of examples of how we're doing it. We just finished our senior winter games, which were phenomenal. We had an increase from 100 to 124 people this time. We will be having our senior summer games. And our winter games concluded on February 14th with the Valentine's Day dance. About almost 400 people showed up. And seniors can move pretty good on that dance floor. I mean, I'm almost 58, and there were a lot of them 20, 30 years older than me moving pretty good. And I just want to tell you kind of what it's all about. My husband and my brother were dealers for the Texas Hold'em. And everybody gets a gold, bronze, and silver medal. And then there was an overall playoff for the three gold. And the final winner gets his name on the trophy. And he was a gentleman, elderly, who never comes out. And when he found out about the winter games and that they were having this Texas Hold'em, which he plays online, he told his wife, "I'm going to go and participate." And all through the poker, she kept saying, "Hurry, hurry, he's not going to make it." And he said, "Oh, no, I'm having fun, I'm staying." And he was the overall winner. So that's what it does by allowing us to get word out to seniors that we have activities and events for them. Another was a lady, I think 89 years old, who told Donna it was the best time she ever had at the dance. Another thing that our committee is going to be sponsoring is we have a table at next Friday's Gopher Red event at the Atlantis for the Heart. So thanks to your support, our committee is able to continue helping seniors in our community. So thank you very much.
Thank you. Eddie Lorton.
City Council, Mr. Mayor, for the record, I'm Eddie Lorton, running for mayor in Reno. I ended up, that ribbon cutting was fun, that was good. And they were laughing three months ago, but not today. So that was nice, it was fun. But now, this is our chance to move forward, and I hope we can empower the city council on what the meaning of their vote is. So if you're not happy with throwing money out the door like it does, your vote's as powerful as everybody else's. And now is this only chance in time since this city began years ago. Where's our chance to break away from the good old boys? So I'm trying to plow the way, and I'm the other choice. So I hope people can see that and think about what that means. Thank you.
Thank you. Ben Klingenfalter? I got that right, didn't I?
Close, Kleinfelter.
Kleinfelter, all right, okay, I'm sorry.
Good day to everybody. I'm here to talk about the arts, and the bill being proposed has some big problems in it. One of the things is that they seem to be, there's one thing in the proponents for artists. That would be like somebody selling somebody else's artwork. And this shouldn't be a big issue at all because there's not really that many artists who have things that it's just, like a shirt, for instance. That's something you can wear, and if you paint on it and it becomes a piece of art, that's not right. That's not, because it's still a shirt you can wear. So that's in the, in this new code. And having proponents sell your artwork, that's having somebody else sell your artwork, that's not protected. That should, that'll be a mess out there. Having people selling T-shirts and other people's artwork out there, that's not protected. There's not, it shouldn't be an issue. When I've gone to some of these art shows to talk to artists about their rights, and there are no, very few, one maybe, that even qualifies to have the First Amendment protected at your rib cook-off and things like that, there might not even be an artist in that whole deal. So this doesn't affect the big, those shows. We've had free shows at parks because the park department has gotten the fact that you can do this. And we even had a bill passed for the legislature for art in the park. And the most we can get is about 15 artists to come to these. And the artists all help police the other artists that do show up to make sure that they are qualified because we don't want to be mixed up with T-shirts and selling hats and things like that. That's not what this is about. So you're not going to have a problem with being overrun by tents and people out there selling nonsense. So I hope that we can get past this. I hope that you will work and listen with Steve White, who has worked on this amongst other cities and gotten good things to happen with these, with artists showing their artwork. And we're, you know, we're talking about paintings and photographs and the photography. Lots of photographers don't even want to go out because of the sun shining on it and things like that. But still, we should have a place that we can go and have little art shows, you know? It would be good for the city. This isn't something that is bad. This is good for the city. And Steve Ke, has tried, Steve White, an artist right here, has helped the staff try to write this so that it flows smooth and try and circumvent problems that would come arise in the future. He's had experience in this with many other cities, from Salt Lake City to the Phoenix area. So I certainly hope that they can get together and get this done and not have these problems arise with the misunderstanding it. It's art that has no function, is what we're trying to have. Art that has no function. Thank you.
Stephen White.
Stephen White from Silver Springs. At least I have an easy name to pronounce there.
Yeah, I didn't butcher yours yet.
You know, we're moving along on these codes. But, you know, there's some fundamental problems that staff seem to have in reading these various rulings from the Ninth Circuit. They mix up particularized message speech with artistic self-expression. And one of the things we, you've heard about stained glass windows and T-shirts. You know, we've never been about opening the public properties to all kinds of stuff being sold out there. We are specific about this being defined arts as listed by the Ninth Circuit. And the Ninth Circuit has been very particular about that. It has to be artistic self-expression. But let me, I brought the old stained glass window with me again. Stained glass window. Now, if that were a stained glass window meant to be functional, but put in a window, it would be not art. It would be a functional item, and it would not rise to the full level of protection by the First Amendment. But voila, the artist put a chain on it, showing that it is a non-functional item. It is meant to hang inside of a house in front of a window, not as a functional window. It is art for art's sake. Now, I brought a T-shirt along, folks. I brought a T-shirt, and I'm going to quickly do a painting on it. There we go, I did a T-shirt. And I painted on it. Nice little smiley face. That does not make this art for art's sake. It is still functional. You can still wear it, it's still a utilitarian T-shirt. You can't open the door for clothing to be sold all over the public property as art for art's sake when it's not. It's still functional. Now, you could take this T-shirt, put it in a frame, and seal it up so it could only be hung on the wall, and then maybe the guy that did it could proclaim it as art for art's sake, like the stained glass window. The artist put the chain on it, showing the intent. You see what I mean? Tattooing. Lo and behold, I got to tell the city attorney, you know, well, they got one up on me. Be darned if the Ninth Circuit did uphold tattooing as being fully protected by the First Amendment. But you don't want it on the public sidewalks and in the parks. And the bottom line is, the city is well within their rights and within their provisions provided by the federal courts to place reasonable time, place, and amount of restrictions on tattooing and making it be done inside of a sanitary situation, inside of a building, not out on the public parks and on the sidewalks. You see what I mean? So by limiting tattooing to the building, the case law that that was dependent upon dealt with tattoo artists down in Promosa Beach that wanted to set up a shop and a business. And the city actually had a ban on tattoo parlors altogether. And they won that ruling because it had to do with tattoo parlors. The Ninth Circuit wasn't opening the door for tattooing to take place in the public parks and on public sidewalks. There, I've sent you all a critique of these recent code provisions that staff is going to present to you today. I don't want to sound totally negative, we're slowly getting there. I'll speak again.
I'm going to let you have two more minutes.
What's that?
I'm going to let you have two more minutes.
Okay. I just want you all to understand, I am not trying to pull a fast one here. I'm trying to walk a narrow line following the federal court's rulings and providing the city with proper codes that not only protect your business owners, but protect the city and also protect the constitutional rights of the citizens they serve. These staff codes go outside of the limits of the Ninth Circuit Court rulings. And that's where they run into problems. And I've provided you with an alternative set of codes.
That's too slow.
And I hope you folks will read through that alternative set of codes and review them, and maybe you'll... And by the way, Mayor, I took out in that alternative set of codes, I took out the provision about the special events. Because I agree that maybe the council want to review the whole issue of special events separately from the Business License Code, the Expressive Merchants Code, and the Parks Code. So I've kind of separated that out from that, we'll deal with that later, okay? But I agree with you, Mr. Mayor, on the, on the special events.
Thank you very much. Mark Merkel?
Hello, Mr. Mayor and City Councilmembers. My name is Mark Merkel, and I'm a county resident. And so the reason I come every, all the time is to, it's part of my mission to express, so people don't get in the car drunk drivers. That's part of my mission, okay? Hi, my name is Mark Merkel, and my mission live is to educate students and the community about what happens when one gets in the car with a drunk driver. I'm reading from this because I suffer a traumatic brain injury and get off track. Okay, here are some statistics. In the City of Reno, from January 1st to February 21st, 2014, there were 93 DUI arrests and 21 crashes and no fatalities. In the City of Reno, from January 1st to February 25th, 2013, there were 119 arrests, 26 crashes, and no fatalities. That's down from, that was last year's I read. It's down now. That's good, but it's still unacceptable, 91 arrests. And I hope to get as many of those out of towners. I believe out of towners come in here and make it. They kill our citizens and do other bad things. But, okay. Through March Pad, people are getting drunk driving. I hope to prevent others from making the same mistakes and suffering the same consequences that I have. Parents, don't drive drunk with your kids in the car. Kids, listen to your parents. They were young once, and listen to your teachers to just make good decisions of you. They're there to help. I never listened to either one, and look what happened to me. My life is completely changed as a result of getting in the car with a drunk driver. Please don't let anyone like me...
Okay, thank you, Mark.
Thank you.
It's a great message. McCanna?
Thank you.
Fady McCanna, Fed... Fed McCanna? You have something to say, sir?
Hi, my name is Fady McCanna. And I own three businesses in downtown. It's campy, and a club went up, and I used to own Whiskey Bar. When we took Whiskey Bar like two years ago, and when I applied for the liquor license, one of the conditions to get the liquor license was to sign a letter for the city, the city council, saying I cannot have a cabaret license inside Arlington Tower. And that's the letter I signed. It was an agreement, I was forced to sign the letter, or I would not get the cabaret license or the liquor license. And the agreement was, I cannot have a live entertainment at the bar because of the noise and people complaining. I said, "Fine," and I signed the letter. Two years later, I couldn't improve the business because of the lack of the live entertainment. My only choice was to sell the business, which was last August of 2013. And the only reason I sold the business, because I cannot have a live entertainment. I was committed to this letter. Now, all of a sudden, the new owner, which my friends, the city is giving a cabaret license. My question is, I need to know how come the law apply to me doesn't apply in other people? Nothing changed in the last two years. The law's still the law, the same location, the same venue. How come I cannot get a cabaret license and somebody else can get a cabaret license? My second issue, I'm still the main tenant on the lease, and they're under sublease. If the city council want to give them a cabaret license, that's fine. But I'm not dealing with the complaints and people complaining about the sound and music there. And just, I would like to have a copy of this letter just for the records. Thanks.
Thank you. Jeff Church?
Good afternoon, Jeff Church. I'm retired from the Reno Police Department. A few concerns, but first of all, I wanted to bring to your attention that Reno Police Officer Earl Tatum, Reno's first African-American RPD officer, retired. But he's now passed away. And memorial services are March 8th, Hope Baptist Church, 1300 hours up in Black Springs. So he, back in the 60s, he was Reno's first African-American officer. Next, I want to bring to your attention some concerns I have. And as time allows, and I didn't have time to make copies for you, but I'll give it to the clerk. I want to talk about our bonds, OPEB's, which are our health care costs, fire issues, mutual aid versus automatic aid, transparency, and some labor contract issues. Just so you know, Detroit and San Bernardino bankruptcy courts refused to place bondholders ahead of the retirees for benefits. Now, the fact that they're lowered to the same level or below that of retirees can cause major ripple effects in the municipal bond market and could affect the City of Reno's future bonds as we get more and more. And I want to talk about OPEB's, which are our health care costs. Your consultant recently told you what I already told you for free, that the free, unlimited, unfunded, lifetime health care for police and fires unsustainable. While the mayor and former city council member, Mr. Iozzi, have chosen to be somewhat sarcastic in their response to me, I actually do have solutions to that problem if anybody cares to listen. I want to talk about fire issues. Recently, not too recently, the last few years, Reno has browned out and closed a number of fire stations due to lack of staffing. And my last count for the Reno Fire Department is we're down about 50 positions, down to about 236. And that current contract does not allow for three-person crews in the stations. If I understand this right, and I think this is insanity, so correct me if I'm wrong. You have a four-person crew, say at Somerset. Somebody calls in sick, and they decide they're not going to backfill that position. Those three personnel are not allowed to stay and staff that fire station, but instead, they're moved over to a four-person station where all seven of them sit around and have coffee rather than have firefighters at two different stations responsible to the City of Reno. And if that's true, that's just absolute insanity. Which leads to the issue of mutual aid and automatic aid. Today, you're going to discuss mutual aid, but we actually really need automatic aid, not mutual aid. Automatic aid means the closest fire department, city, county, Sparks, whoever goes. And we need to get that resolved with the county. And I urge you to engage in mediation... And I urge you to engage in mediation, arbitration, whatever it takes to get this done before too many more homes burn or people die. And I have documented cases of delayed medical response due to squabbling between the two agencies. And I'm also asking for transparency. On the fire issue, you've applied for a safer grant, but the grant application apparently is not made to the public and apparently has not even been taken before the city council. So may we see that safer grant? And I have 10 seconds left. I just, eight seconds left. I just want to tell you Reno is the highest taxed local government in the state. Not just property tax, but 30 cents cheaper for gas in Carson City. Thank you.
I'll try to keep my mouth shut. I'm going to bring it back to the table here and bring it to the city manager. Yes, sir?
Do you think I came here just to sit and watch all of this?
Well, that's right, but I didn't see your thing, so I just wanted to... must have got lost in this...
I just actually came here to watch the show today.
I know you did, because you knew I was going to do some ribbon cutting. So you come right on up, Mr. Denae.
What is Sam doing here?
Oh, you buried it down.
What is Sam doing here?
Mr. Denae, you're wasting time. You're down to two minutes.
Sam Denae, the Encyclopedia of Reno Government and the father of the best candidate for Reno mayor and maybe a candidate himself, meaning Sam, me. Oh, by the way, before I go any further, I want to compliment you folks on having the Wi-Fi working good on my little cellphone here. I'll walk in, bam, I'm set up for Wi-Fi, and I can sit back there during the lulls in the meeting and watch thousands of Sam Denae at Reno City Council YouTube's on here. Lots of fun. At any rate, the best candidate for Reno mayor is spelled D-E-H-N-E and happens to be my son. And I might even put my name on the ballot myself. I haven't decided yet. And by the way, for the folks who were wondering, the folks were wondering what this was about the ribbon cutting thing, the mayor, you can see a piece of the ribbon over there. There was a gigantic ribbon here and the mayor wanted to prove to the judges down there that he is different than the rest of the career politicians. And he proved it right in front of everybody with gigantic scissors and cut that ribbon. You all missed, it was before the meeting. But the thing that really swayed the judges, besides Sam Denae pointing out the ribbon cutting thing during the procedure down there, the thing that really swayed the judges into doing, to doing, I don't hate to say the right thing, to doing what Sam ordered them to do, what really swayed them is when Sam and the mayor forgot to point it out earlier in the meeting, the mayor also gets first choice on the caviar upstairs. How could you possibly leave that part out? At any rate, at any rate.
Yes.
You should save that ribbon and send it down to the judges. You know, I've been coming to these meetings since 1994. 3,757 public testimonies, every one of them with capabilities of saving the city from the de facto bankruptcy it is in. What I can't understand is where along the line did our dysfunctional pathetic media become so insanely afraid and jealous of this little 160-pound senior citizen who wouldn't hurt a fly? Well, once upon a time, I did fly around with enough bombs strapped between my legs to kill 93 million people. Thank goodness I didn't ever have to drop those bombs. And sometimes I wish I had some of them when I take a look at the media that the people we have masquerading, the pipsqueak, pipsqueaks we have masquerading around here as the media. I just don't know why, just because I call them corrupt mendacious, the media, I call the media corrupt mendacious, perverted, deceptive, rotten, evil, wicked, sleazy and dysfunctional. Why, it's the truth! So why do they have to bury the words of the 10-ton elephant who's at every one of these meetings? Why are they like that? Why are they so insanely afraid of the D-E-H-N-E? I've heard rumors that if they get in, try to type in their computer D-E-H, the computer shuts down. Chad Denae, retired, I mean Marine Corps veteran who was only a few votes away from being Reno mayor, is the best person for Reno mayor. You know why? Because he's got Sam Denae on speed dial.
That, well, I'll reserve comment. Now, I will bring it back to the table and, by the way, you should get with Mr. Chisel, you and Mr. Church, Mr. Chisel, because we're not bankrupt. I just thought I'd answer that question for you.
I said, I meant to say de facto bankrupt.
Okay, thank you very much. Mr. City Manager, it's your turn.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. We wanted to announce this morning that local athlete David Wise, who represented Reno, Nevada in the 2014 Olympic Winter Games in Russia, as we all know, David won a gold medal in the men's freestyle half-pipe competition. He is the first Olympic gold medalist in the event and the first Olympic gold medalist that is from Reno and lives in Reno. I just wanted to say we are very proud of David and look forward to welcoming him home.
I think he comes into town Friday afternoon, doesn't he? By Friday night?
Thursday.
Thursday.
Thursday at 6:50.
Thanks, okay. Everybody should show up to welcome him. All right. Approval of the agenda before we go to it. Item J31, approval of the Catalyst Fund, that has been pulled. Item J32, approval of grant agreement for allocation, that has been pulled. Public comment, we've done, we'll have proclamations. Item C1 and C2, presentations, item D1. D2, public hearing, 12:15. Item F1, there will not be a public hearing this evening. Any other changes you'd like to make of the agenda?
Can we move consent up before...
Yes, we can move, let's, so that we can clear out staff. I'm going to move consent up before the presentations and before the proclamations. All right, any changes? Have motion second? Second? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those that oppose, no. Motion carries unanimously. We'll move the consent item up. Any items want to pull for discussion?
I do. I do.
Okay, yeah, we better do approval of the minutes.
Oh.
Let me get the approval of the minutes. However, passed it.
I have a correction on the minutes.
Okay.
Okay, on the minutes, and we had a bunch, but I'm talking about the minutes of February 12th. On page, let's see, on page 30, it shows me absent, but then on page 31, there's a time, but it doesn't show me coming back. I think there's a, I think it should have shown me coming back. But on the previous page of that, and I think that's just a clerical error, on the previous page, page 29, where we did the evaluation of the clerk, it says that no action was taken on this item, which I don't doubt, I don't think we took a formal motion. But my question is, and I guess I direct this to maybe Mr. Manager or, you know, when we evaluated the manager, we take action, I think, you know, he has a contract. Are we supposed to, under our charter, take action on our evaluation of the clerk or we just put our input and that, that is an evaluation in and of itself? And maybe legal has a point on that.
Tracy Chase, Reno City Attorney's Office, the charter doesn't explicitly dictate to the council how you will evaluate the city clerk. So that is within council's discretion.
It doesn't even mention evaluation. Okay, so that can, that can in and of itself be an evaluation, just us going around like we did and not taking action. Okay, all good, then I'll make a motion.
Okay. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those that oppose, no. Motion carries unanimously. Now, we'll go to the consent items. You want to pull? Ms. Edred, you had some? E1B?
I have a few.
Ms. Edred, Kevin? No? Okay.
Mr. Delgado pulled the one I wanted to pull for discussion.
Okay.
E5, E12, E15, and E16.
E15?
No, no, just E16, not E15.
E16.
Yeah.
Okay, any others? Motion to approve all the others?
Him.
Well, let me, I did get a thing dropped on me at the last minute. You'll have to turn them in a little sooner, sir. Mr. Denae. And usually we don't, but that's okay.
Sam Denae, the Encyclopedia of Reno Government and the father of the best candidate for Reno mayor and maybe a candidate himself. I've got to clear that up a little, Mr. Mayor. You're leaving the wrong impression for everybody out watching the Sam Denae Show on TV. The folks in the audience kind of know what went down, but out in TV land, they don't know that I, and I'm not casting aspersions on the clerk over there either, but I turn, 99.9% of the time, I turn my paper in every time, on time. And today, I certainly did. So you sort of made it look like you were doing me a favor by allowing me to come up here.
Well, I am.
And I didn't want... you are. Oh, so you are not just a ribbon cutter, you're the caviar king, and you're the person who gets to decide whether you're doing favors for people.
Bingo.
You.
Now, what would you like...
Bring the judges back in. Put them back in recession.
What would you like to speak about?
Where's the Roser? She might want to be taking notes.
Did you want to speak on one of these items?
I mainly just wanted to segue.
Okay. Thank you.
You got me off track by making me...
No, you were, you were well on your way.
That whole diatribe. I'm off track, right?
Yes, sir.
Oh, what we have here, ladies and gentlemen, is the consent agenda, and I'm not speaking for or against anything. And for the people out watching the Sam Denae Show on TV land and in YouTube later on, the consent agenda is where these folks will be voting on all of these 15 items, 14 items, more than that actually, in one vote, except in this case, they pulled, the lady over there pulled several off of the, to speak specifically on them. But, you know, I don't want to be critical, but you would seem like consent agenda items where you're going to vote generally without even a discussion should be mundane housekeeping items, you know? Maybe about how much to pay for the extra caviar they're going to have after the celebrated judge's decision up there. Or maybe not decision, maybe it be a mourning. At any rate, I looked down this list and for the people out in TV land, and maybe we're not de facto bankrupt because there's a lot of money on here, going to just be voted on without a discussion. 6,760,000 big ones are going to be voted on just on this one item. And I'm not speaking for or against it, but the approval of reward to Q and D. I mean, I've seen you, I've seen you go through three hours of discussion over whether or not art is art or things like that. Now, you're just going to vote on this $6,760,000 project without even a discussion except the lady over there pulled it off. And we have a few more down here. There's another one for over a half a million dollars. And there's another one for $250,000. It seems like these things should see the light of day. Did, did, did the other companies bid on these things and their bids were not good enough? Where's the background in this whole thing? And he's smiling because he's thinking $6 million isn't that much money, Sam. He's probably got it in his wallet.
Oh, I wish, I wish. All right, now, we're to the consent items. Item E1B. Oh, yes, we had a motion to approve all others and add a second. Now, we're going to all vote. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those that oppose, no. Motion carries. Now, we will go to item 1, E1B, Mr. Delgado.
I was hoping I could get a little history from staff regarding this license and previous owners and how that worked out.
Mr. Mayor, Mr. City Manager, Michael Chomp, Business Relations Manager for the Business License Division. This item is the Ampersand, and I know you previously heard from the previous owner, which was under the name of Whiskey. The applicant is applying for a cabaret license to have live entertainment in that location. This location is in the Arlington Towers. It's an existing bar that has been located there. It is licensed as a bar currently. And I know you heard there was an agreement, some sort of agreement. So if you have questions with that, might be happy to...
Yeah, if you could talk about that agreement and what was, why did that prior, previous owner have to sign a letter and what with that letter?
My understanding is, is when Mr. Mahaney applied for the license, the council at that time, and I think it was 2010, heard from some tenants of Arlington Towers, members of the HOA that were concerned with noise, with having live entertainment. So that item was continued for about, I think, 30 days. During that 30 days, council asked the applicant if he would be willing to sign an agreement to not have live entertainment and kind of lay out what the operation was going to be in that letter. And I don't, I think you should have a copy of that letter. But in that letter, this particular bar, when it was Whiskey, was really the clientele, under my understanding, was that it was a clientele from 25 to 60-plus, that it was more of a casual bar that would be serving fine whiskeys for the connoisseur of whiskeys and things of that nature, that there was never any real intent to have live entertainment or actually turn it into a nightclub. It is, it is properly zoned for live entertainment. Any nightclub, as you know, in the city of Reno would require a special use permit. That's not the intent with this new applicant that is applied for the cabaret. This is an add-on to his existing bar license. The applicants are here if there's additional questions for them. And any additional questions, I'll be happy to answer.
Yeah, so, Mr. Chomp, so the use of that property, when that first, when that previous owner was there, you said that it was appropriate for that use to have a cabaret at the time, but then you took that part out, left the alcohol option in, but required a letter, but to appease the council at that time to allow them to set up shop?
And the request came from the council. The request did not come from me or my office.
And so is this new owner now having to go through the same process? Are we looking at this brand new?
This is the first time that you've seen the cabaret, so they have not been asked. They are aware, I did meet with them, they are aware of the previous agreement with the previous owner who is subletting the bar to them. So they are aware of the previous arrangement. Again, it is zoned properly, so I did not ask them to abide by that voluntary agreement.
What were the concerns for the letter back in the, with the previous owner?
The, the...
For not having...
Concern was noise. I mean, really a concern, you know, Arlington Towers is a residential building. It's not zone residential, but it is, obviously, there's residents in there. There's a retail component on the first floor of that, that building. The level between the first floor ceiling and the first set of units, livable units is about 100 feet, is my understanding. Ampersand has been operating with DJs in there under a special activity permit. And to date, I have not received any complaints. The DJ's a little different than having that...
Have we gone to the homeowners association and talked about this?
My understanding is the owners did discuss it with them. The licensing division has not heard from them or any concerns from any residents.
Since we had the restrictions on there, don't you think we should go find out what the homeowner's position?
We certainly can do that. If that's the direction, we certainly can do that.
All right, I'd suggest that is...
I want to, if I may be recognized...
You sure?
Do we have the legal ability to condition a liquor license in this manner with that agreement? I mean, was that agreement within our scope of our ordinances to restrict?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Members of council, Fraternal Committee Development Director, you can vote the liquor or this privileged license up, down, or continue it. There is no conditioning of this cabaret license. It's kind of fuzzy on what happened last time when Whiskey went through with, when there was an agreement, because that was, that was a voluntary agreement. The council did not take action. Staff did not take action. So this was a voluntary agreement by the previous owner of Whiskey.
We didn't demand that he sign the letter?
Mr. Mayor, as a body, we have no record as this body demanding that or taking action for that.
No public records or anything else demanding?
No public record.
He's just saying we did.
That's correct.
Yes?
I'm sorry, I was, can you finish?
Oh, please go.
I just have, I have a couple of questions on this as well. For Ampersand, how long have you had live entertainment going on at the new location? I'm sorry, I don't...
Let me ask the applicants to...
You don't come up to the microphone.
Good morning or afternoon. I'm Ryan Goldhammer, one of the co-owners of Ampersand.
Trevor Lepick, also a co-owner.
Hello, Mayor and City Council...
Hello, Mayor and City Council.
We've been doing live entertainment under a special use permit for two months. We've had, roughly, about two months. We've had no complaints. We did speak with the director of the HOA. He was, he has no complaints, has had no complaints. We discussed the previous arrangement. He was unaware. He was, he was not the director of the HOA at that time, or she, was it she? Trevor, talk to her, sorry. And there hasn't been any issues, and we have been having that entertainment. There is around 100 feet of honeycomb concrete wall ceilings, three different ceilings, that it hits on its way up. We have no subwoofers. And generally speaking, usually sound is more of a distraction when it comes from outside of the building as it angles up towards somebody's window than it is coming through the building vertically.
Do you have open windows?
We do not.
What days, what days and what hours are you currently having your live entertainment?
Thursdays and Fridays and Saturdays, usually till, you know, sometime around, sometimes till 2:00 or 3:00, sometimes till 1:00 a.m. It's a small bar.
Is it a DJ-type?
It's DJ-type stuff. We do have a live band maybe once or twice a month. Those shows are over before midnight. And it's not a nightclub. It's not the correct size for a nightclub, and it's not our intention to be a nightclub. However, it does dramatically affect our ability to compete with our neighbor as we are in the entertainment district, and we are zoned to have cabaret. And we feel that we do have every right to compete against, to have all of the same privileges as the neighbors next to us. The agreement that Mr. Mahenna signed was voluntary. And I'd like to also point out that as we did the sale of the business with him, at no time did he present us with that letter that he had signed, an agreement that he had made, not us, never presented that letter to us, never made us aware of that letter. Would have obviously, would have been something we would have liked to have researched before we gave him a large sum of money and committed to a note to pay back additional monies that we are now have to sublet with him still on the master lease. So that would have really affected our decision, or it would have allowed us to do our own homework on it. I'd also like to point out that after signing this agreement, there is a long history of Facebook posts and events that Whiskey Bar was having live entertainment and DJs for a very long time after they signed that agreement. So there was a huge misrepresentation of what we could use the space for by the previous owner.
Okay.
As they were, they were already doing those things.
Okay.
I was, I've been at those parties. I've, you can, there are physical copies and, and history that you can see on Facebook of those events happening.
All right, thank you.
I mean, I, I guess, you know, I'm understanding, and I think you misspoke, you said you're under a special use permit. I think you've been under a special event permit, so you've been coming in, you know, maybe on Fridays to get, you know, permits, and there's so many you can only have a year. That's how that works.
They last for a week at a time.
Yeah, okay.
We've been paying for those out of pocket.
Okay, so now you want a cabaret, and can we condition cabarets not in any way, is that under state law, or isn't that under Reno Municipal Code? For example, could we, you know, do an hour thing under our cabaret license? Do we have statutory authority or, you know, meet, method of, you know, music or so on, if you just let our legal count?
Excuse me, Julie Towler, Deputy City Attorney, for the record. I'm happy to do some research to determine whether the city may condition the license, and we could come back at a later meeting. The way, my cursory review of the ordinance, but I want to research more, is that it looks like it's just approval or denial. But like I said, I, I did a very quick review.
Yeah, I mean, up or down per municipal code, or up or down per statute is, is two different distinctions, too.
I, I've only had a chance to review ordinance, and from what I could tell based my limited research, up or down just in ordinance.
In ordinance, okay. So.
I mean, I'm sorry. That helps. Approval or denial?
Yeah, in ordinance. So that's, you know, a factor.
Yeah, I, I guess my comment is if, for two months, you know, four days, three, three days a week that you're having the music, I suppose if there was some concern from the tenants that you would have heard something, certainly at 2:00 a.m. by now, but I guess it's not, it's not, is it, it's not normal to solicit the input from a building's HOA when this type of thing comes before, so.
I mean, we're, we try, we're good neighbors. I mean, we're, we've developed a good neighbor agreement through the, through RAD, and we talk to them, you know, we say, if there, if there was an issue, please come to us. I mean, they, they have our contact information, and we've never been contacted about the, about the issues, and neither have our landlords about the sound issues, you know. I mean, the HOA would, I assume they would go to them first, and, you know, we've, we've never had, never had any complaint for any kind of issue.
And you guys have a couple of other businesses in town, correct?
We do. Yeah, we, we have a cabaret add-on at Noble Pie Parlor across the street, which is, you know, 200, 200 feet away, in the bottom of the El Cortez Hotel.
Just don't both of you talk, one at a time, please.
Yeah, I mean, I mean, I guess the point is, we know these operators, they have investment elsewhere, they have proven themselves to be good operators. It's just pulling these licenses is really difficult for us. So, you know, we need to decide what, you know, what we want to do. Does the HOA covenants in there give the HOA any enforcement powers against other tenants for being disruptive or annoying in any way?
I mean, they have the ability to file a complaint, just like the church across the street would, or, you know, the, our neighbor next door to us, I mean. I'd like to point out, too, that it's been extremely financially heavy on us to purchase $150 special use for special.
Event.
Special event licenses every single week for two months.
Okay.
And that not having that, not having that use would probably put us out of business.
Okay, thank you, Ms. Shivi.
Mr. Goldhammer, so do you mean to tell me you walk in this building and you purchase this permit every, what, every week?
We've been purchasing it every.
Every week?
We've been purchasing it every week for two months, we've been purchasing this permit so that we can operate.
That must be very cumbersome.
And at a cost, at a cost of, so far, at a cost of around, you know, $700 or $800 already. We would have purchased the cabaret license from the get-go when we were going through the licensing process, but we were misinformed that we were not zoned for the permit and that we could only get a liquor license. So we would have applied for it in July when we, when we went through the permitting process. And yes, we have been coming in and paying, paying the fee each time.
I guess my, my concern is that the communication is obviously disconnected at the business license department, and, and I've had other constituents come forward in that sense, and I think we need to do a better job sort of connecting the dots for you guys, because you are what make our city thrive, so.
Okay.
Thank you.
All right.
Thank you, thank you very much.
Any other questions right now? Thank you very much. You can sit down, please. All right, do you have something else, sir? Okay, have one public comment, Mr. Lawton.
For the record, Eddie Lawton. And actually, before the new council members, we had this battle about two or three years ago with the bars and the 24-hour town thing, and they chose to do nothing because it was illegal. Here it is, an entertainment district, people move into the middle like Vegas, and they want to complain about noise. It's been an entertainment district for 90, 100 years. Here seems to be some good young men trying to do business. People move downtown, you get noise. I think they should be allowed to do business. We had this war before. I hope they leave it alone and promote business and business owners, but when you move in the middle of an entertained district, there's going to be noise, and there's bars, and there's entertainment, and there's gaming, and that's what happens downtown. So I hope they give them a break and give them the license. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, I'm prepared to make a motion on this item.
Okay.
Prepared to approve the cabaret license.
Have a motion and a second to approve. Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those that oppose, no. Motion carries unanimously. All right, now we'll go to item E5. Ms. Brackus.
Mr. Mayor, I have a few questions for staff. Let me ask you, this is a, this is a large scope of work we're doing this year in our sewer rehab project, and just for my own edification, the 6.7 million in one year, how does that, you know, going back a number of years, this is a lot more, this is a, is this double what we've done maybe over the last 10 years in dollar amounts, or?
Mr. Mayor and City Council Members, Carrie Koski, Public Works, actually, no, it is not double. We've typically done about 6 to 7 million in the last three, about the last three years in underground, in the excavation part.
Okay.
We also do another lining project.
Okay.
So it's, it's right in alignment with what we've been doing.
Okay, I was trying to understand if, you know, we've kind of made an uptick in our collection system renovation since we've put in the automatic, automatic escalators on the sewer bills, and if we, but it seems like we've been maybe spending that money over at the plant. And this is the, is this a pretty complex one, the university one?
Yes, it is. There's a lot of components, a lot of special consideration for the university, as well as Washoe County Schools and the private property owners in this area.
Okay, well, you know, we talk a lot about wanting to be a university town, and our fundamental obligation to being university is providing them with infrastructure for them to do what they need to do. So I'm happy about that. My, my real question, then, is about this little component in this, over on Swan Circle area. What, and, you know, more, since this is, I guess, the first year this has come in, or second year, is how are we figuring this out? How do we pick out this little area? Do we know we have a little problem over there of some sort we're trying to address, and that's how this kind of elevated up to the list this year?
Absolutely. This, this particular area, we've got some maintenance issues in the area that are more frequent than other areas. And we looked at the age of the pipe, and obviously, we televise the pipe before we go in and make final determination, and some of the pipes are, are missing, there's the separation and that sort of thing. So it's, it's an area that, that we need to really work on.
Is this that ore, ore area where there, a sewer is connected into the stormwater, and we've been having some backup in people's houses? Is that, are we taking care of that area?
Not, no, this is, this is not part of that area.
That area?
No.
Okay, okay.
Motion?
I'll motion.
Second. Have motion, second, all in favor, say aye. Those that oppose, no. Motion carries unanimously. E12, Ms. Brackus.
I have a question on this on-call contract for electrical for our signal maintenance. Do we have this on-call, does that mean they do all the maintenance, or they just do the on-call when we can't get our people out there?
For the record, Kurt Dietrich, Associate Civil Engineer. Actually, that's correct. It's typically for the items that are beyond in-house abilities.
Abilities, so it's not a timing thing?
Correct.
Like, you know, on Sunday or something?
Actually, it's a little bit of that as well, for instance, when we have knockdowns, and also beyond our ability, that we can respond quicker.
Okay, okay. I guess, did we at some point do all of this, and how long has this contract been in place that we've been more, or having this backup of resources in this function?
This is actually the third contract, and the, the previous two were actually extended for an additional year, so I want to say about five years this contract's been in place.
And, and the question I'm raising is, we're going up on the mounts for the two-year, like $150,000. It's, it's a considerable jump. Is that, am I reading that correctly?
Actually, the last two contracts were around $400,000 as well. It just, typically, we don't spend the full amount. We have the full amount in place in case for emergency work, but typically, we don't, we don't approach that $400,000 over the last couple of contracts.
Well, I mean, it says that on this one, we're authorizing not to exceed 383, and the last time, we authorized 223,000. So we're authorizing 100, what is that, 60,000 more? I mean, it's, why are we authorizing so much more? Did the bids come in? Have we thrown up a lot more traffic lights?
For the record, John Flansburgh, Public Works. The previous council approval was a contract amount worth approximately $400,000. The amount of funds that were authorized for the contractor to actually perform work was the lower amount.
Oh, okay, you're saying authorized in terms of authorized for payments?
Correct. So the action before you today is, we're asking for authorization to go up to 383, but we'll authorize the payments as the work comes in. We will not exceed that amount, and if we have a need to exceed that, obviously, we would come back and ask for a change or increase in that amount.
Well, is this an encumbrance we can afford for, you know, going forward? I guess that's my, more of a budgetary question, I mean, because we've got to encumber it somewhere, right? So we're prepared to encumber.
Out of the street fund.
In the street fund?
That's correct.
I mean, so it means other street work we can't, you know, commit to in our, our repair. And I guess my, my other question is, are we out in Washoe County or up an incline repairing traffic lights, or is our contractor up there doing that? And I, because I see the interlocal agreement coming up next agenda.
Correct. Actually, we're responsible through interlocal agreement for NDOT and Washoe County Signal. So if they have a knockdown within their jurisdiction, typically, we'll replace it, and then we'll seek reimbursement through that agency.
Do we get any contract administration money for that, say a 10% surplus, or are we just billing straight costs on that?
I, I believe it's straight costs on that.
I think we need to rethink that. I think if we're going to provide a regional service, we need a little compensation for doing that, but I guess that's another item that's coming forward if we, you know, when we go with this. Okay, I'll, I'll make the motion.
Okay, have a second, have a second, all in favor, say aye. Those that oppose, no. Motion carries unanimously. Now we'll go to E16.
Now, this, I, I need a little explanation on. This is a retract property at the southwest corner of 4th Street and Keystone Avenue, and it's a property that's, we have a lease on. What are, what are the terms of the current lease?
Lori Miles, Public Works. The current lease is an old railroad lease that's just basically an extension on a month-to-month basis.
Is there any business activity on the lease right now?
No, Barry Hinkley is in the process of dissolving any operations in the current area, and they, this is their way of trying to assign their building, which they own, to a new tenant.
So they are, there's a building that they own, the owner, you know, the improvements are separated, so they're going to lease it to this individual, and this individual's come to us to ask for a four-year lease. Is that correct?
The amendment is with Barry Hinkley, so we're going to amend his lease so that he can, he, that's how he wanted to market it, do the amendment of the lease, and then he's going to assign the lease.
Okay, so, so have we been being, been paid on this?
They gave us notice of termination, so it's, it's a matter of, it's laying dormant at the moment, so they are.
And they've, your picture there where the canopy is, that's owned by somebody else?
Right, this is the gas pumps.
Who's that owned by?
Opio Ranches, so we'll see.
Opio, right.
And then we own this little parcel here with the market on it.
So they don't have, if they, we lease that to them, they only have access over on this one corner to that piece of property?
Correct.
Or off of the, or off of Keystone.
Correct.
And then we have that piece in the back. I, I would like to see us personally study that piece of property more before we tie it up, because we have that big piece in the back, and then you got the front part, and to see if there's something we can do with Opio and stuff and make that one big piece of property for some type of development.
We can certainly do that in the future, should they want to purchase it, we can.
I, I would hate to see us go through with this lease at this time.
I would, I would agree. I think we need to study this. We're taking a cut in the rent that's going on, and as a matter of fact, the Regional Transportation Commission is studying 4th Street, Keystone Avenue. I think there's a lot of potential down there to meet other objectives we have, so I'd like to maybe have you come back with us to give additional direction on this.
So, okay, so.
Just as a quick little point of order, I believe you already approved E15, so.
Which one?
E15, the one right, so those are, they're companion items, so I guess the request would be to reconsider that item. If you're going to, if you're, if you're not going to go forward with 16, reconsider 15 as well and deny both of those.
Okay, I'd like a reconsideration of E15.
I, I will move to that. I thought E15- I, I will move to that. I thought E15 was East 4th Street. And we are talking about East.
I'm sorry, I take that back.
Mr. Mayor, may I be heard on this item?
You sure can.
Thank you. Mr. Mayor, members of the city council.
You'll have to turn in a little blue sheet when you get through, but pull the mic over to you. Identify yourself for the record.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. My name is Richard Williamson. I represent Opio Ranches. This entire corner has been vacant since April. My client has been receiving no money. The city has been receiving no money with which to pay its retract bonds, which I assume certainly the city has been meeting its obligations. So this property's been in the red for both the city and for my client. Opio Ranches has been diligently, first trying to pursue Barry Hinkley to meet its obligations, and also trying to find a replacement tenant to pay the city and pay Opio Ranches. We've worked very hard on this matter for a number of months. We finally have identified a potential tenant who is a, a known operator in, in town. He's an experienced commercial gas operator. And we would ask that the city approve this. As I hope you all know and probably have seen, the property is a blight as it is right now. It's been vacant since April. There are vagrants living on and near the property, on the city's property, not on Opio Ranches' property. There's weeds and potholes that are beginning to pop up. I mean, it truly is a blight, and we've been working very hard. Ms. Miles's office has been working very hard for a number of months to try and bring this to fruition. I, I know there was one comment on some concerns that the rent is being reduced on the city from 3,700 to 3,000. Opio Ranches, from Barry Hinkley, was receiving $29,421 a month. It is now also receiving 3,000. So while the city is being asked to take approximately a 20% reduction, my client to get this deal to go through is taking a 90% reduction in its, in its operations. And we would ask to reconsider, I guess, your, your concerns, and I'm familiar with the history of the property. I'd be happy to answer any questions you have. But this deal's been in the works for several months. A number of people have worked very hard to bring it together, and I, and I would ask that you approve it today so that we can get this site back up and running, so the city can receive its money to pay the retract bond, and so my client can also receive its money to keep the property going.
Well, I, I hate to disappoint you, but I can't support it right now till I know a little bit more about it and I understand it a little more. Even though you've been negotiating and working on it, I talked to Mr. Opio months and months and months ago, and I've never heard anything else. And until we can look at it and see what we own and what we're doing, I, I want to know more about it, because we've got a large piece of property there that I think we might be able to do something better with. So I would like to look at it. I want to work with Opio. They've been very good in the community, and they're very good people. But as of right now, I'm personally not ready to go forward. So I'd like for staff to work on it and get back to us and communicate with us over the next 30 days.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Yeah, I'll second that, and so I'll, the motion is to, what would the motion be?
To continue for 60 days, and when we look at this, or 30 days, whatever you think you're going to need.
Lori Miles, Public Works. Also, just to let you know that the, any sale of this property would have to be approved by Deppa Bank, which is the bondholder.
Yes.
Well, then, we're not talking about selling right now. We're talking about, but we might, if we ever wanted to sell it or do something, you're right, Deppa Bank would have to contribute.
Yeah, so I'll, I'll move to continue this item for 60 days.
Okay, do I have a second? Have a second. All in favor say aye. Those that oppose, no. Motion carries unanimously. Thank you, and I'm very sorry that. All right, now, let's see. Let's go to cash disbursements. Anybody want to declare anything? Have motion to approve. Do I have a second? All in favor say aye. Those that oppose, no. Motion carries. Let me ask, the young people over here, what item are you here for?
Yep.
Well, you just come on up here. Well, now, I want to apologize to you people for making you go through this wonderful thing, but you might as well learn now, because you told me you wanted to be the mayor. And so I wanted you to see what it's like a little bit, okay? Really funny, isn't it?
My name's Neoma. How are you? Good. Thanks for hanging in there. I know how wiggly you guys are getting over there sitting for so long.
I apologize for keeping y'all waiting. I should have moved you up sooner than.
Thank you.
Well, Mr. Mayor, this is appropriate, I think, for me to be reading this proclamation as a, a mom taxi every day. I can appreciate this Nevada move, so. All right, you guys ready? Okay, here we go. All right, whereas parents driving children to school can account for up to 25% of the morning rush hour traffic in the vicinity of schools. And whereas walking and bicycling to school reduces the number of vehicle trips in the vicinity of schools and potential conflicts between vehicles and pedestrians or bicyclists. And whereas reducing the number of vehicles driving students to school results in increased safety, reduced traffic congestion, improved air, improved air quality, and less fuel consumption in the vicinity of schools. And whereas the benefits related to physical activity at an early age play a leading role in reducing rates of heart disease, diabetes, and other obesity-related health problems among children. Whereas children, parents, and community leaders around Nevada are joining together to take part in an athletic event on Nevada Moves Day on Wednesday, March 19th. So now therefore, I, Neoma Jarden, on behalf of Robert A. Kachel, Senior Mayor of City of Reno, and much more than a ribbon cutter, now do hereby proclaim Wednesday, March 19th, 2014 as Nevada Moves Day.
Now, would, would, would y'all like to say something? Okay. Who's going to do the talking? Oh, the mayor's going to do some talking. Go ahead.
I'm Michael Skyver, and I go to Bud Beasley School, and I play football.
Thank you. How about you?
I'm Dawson Daniels. I go to school at Sepulveda, and I play football on dirt bikes.
All right.
My name is Bryce Dobell, and I go to Sepulveda, and I play football.
My name's Robbie Bolin. I go to Jerry Whitehead. I play football, baseball, and ride dirt bikes.
All right. Now, why don't y'all do me a favor before you go? Did you want to say something, ma'am?
I do. Thank you, Mr. Mayor and City Council. I'm MJ Cloud, and I'm the Safe Routes to School Coordinator. This is one of the events we do throughout the year, and these boys will actually end up playing football all together in their high school, because they play together now on the same team. And being able to see this as well as represents such a great event as Nevada Moves, I appreciate your time.
Well, what I would like all of you gentlemen to do now is to come by here so we can shake your hand. I did ask them which one wanted to be mayor, and the only one that raised his hand was in a blue shirt.
He's the team quarterback.
Oh, is that, that's what it is. Okay. That explains it. All right, now we'll go to.
Right here, Mr. Mayor.
Or we called you next?
We did, we did. All right, sounds good. Wherever you want to stand. Where are you comfortable? Uh, Mr. Mayor, I have here with me are some remarkable ladies in the community that every year, they do work in the community in special regards to International Women's Day. So here I have a proclamation I would like to present to them. Whereas American women of every race, class, and ethnic background have made historic contributions to the growth and strength of our nation in countless recorded and unrecorded ways, and have served as early leaders in the forefront of every major progressive social change movement. And whereas American women have played a, and continue to play a critical economic, cultural, and social role in every sphere of life of the nation by constituting a significant portion of the labor force, working inside and outside of the home. And whereas American women have played a unique role throughout the history of the nation by providing the majority of the volunteer labor force of the nation. And whereas American women were particularly important in the establishment of early charitable philanthropic and cultural institutions in our nation. And whereas American women have been leaders, not only in securing their own rights of suffrage and equal opportunity, but also in the abolitionist movement and emancipation, excuse me, movement, and the industrial labor movement, and civil rights movement, and other movements, especially in the peace movement, which created more fair and just society for all. And whereas despite these contributions, the role of American women in history has been consistently overlooked and undervalued in the literature, teaching, and study of the American history. And whereas International Women's Day is celebrated in many countries across the world on March 8th to recognize women for their achievements without regard to division, whether national ethic, ethnic, linguistic, cultural, economic, or political. Now therefore, I, Oscar Delgado, on behalf of the Mayor, Robert Kachel, and the rest of the city council, declare Saturday, March 8th, 2014 as International Women's Day. I'd like to present this to Ziomara Rodriguez and to the young ladies next to me. And if, if you don't mind, I'd like for Ziomara to speak on their event that they're going to take place here on March 8th, I believe, right?
Thank you so much. Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, City Council. For us, this is very important. On March 8th, we're going to have Entre Mujeres, Among Us Women. It's an event that is going to be held from 2:00 to 4:00 at 1301 Cordon Avenue in Reno, Nevada. We are going to be focusing on domestic violence. Every nine minutes, a woman gets battered in this country. Nevada has the highest ranking on women being battered in the United States. We have the highest ranking on women that lose children because of domestic violence or die in the, in the process of domestic violence. We're going to have on March 8th, from 2:00 to 4:00, we're going to have a booth where they're going to be providing information to women regarding safe housing, where to go, help that they need, and different venues so they could understand that they do not have to stay in a, in this kind of situation. We encourage each one of you to please come and join us and be there from 2:00 to 4:00, March 8th, at 1301 Cordon Avenue in Reno, Nevada. Please come and join us and help other women be able to survive. Thank you.
Thank you. Moving on to presentations, item D1.
Good afternoon. My name is Ken Crater. I have the honor and privilege today to introduce Dean Manos Maragakis of the College Engineering of the University of Nevada Reno. I have known Dr. Maragakis since he first came to UNR in 1984, when I was a junior in the Civil Engineering Department, at which time he became a faculty member. Dr. Maragakis is originally from Greece, having received his Bachelor of Science in Civil Engineering from the National Technical University of Athens, Greece. He went on to obtain his Master of Science and PhD degrees from the California Institute of Technology in 1981 and 1984 respectively. Dr. Maragakis was appointed Chair of the Civil Engineering Department in 1994, and became interim dean in 2008, in part due to his great leadership skills that he exhibited up at the College of Engineering. He became permanent dean in 2009 after a national search. Dr. Maragakis, who is a foundation professor at the university, has worked with the faculty, students, and university administration to make the Civil Engineering and Environmental Engineering Department ranked within the top 50 nationwide, and the College of Engineering in the top 100 nationwide. And that's quite an achievement, considering that most of the universities that rank in those areas have departments that are as large as our college. Dr. Maragakis was also one of a select group of deans recently invited to meet with President Obama back in Washington, DC, on a national initiative to increase the number of engineering graduates within our country, a great honor and award. We have a prestigious College of Engineering located right in the heart of our community, right next to downtown Reno, and I know that you would be both pleased and informed to hear from Dr. Maragakis today. Thank you.
Thank you, Ken, for this very generous introduction. There was a little bit inflation, but I will gladly take it. Mr. Mayor and members of the council, thank you very much for the honor and the opportunity to be speaking in front of you today. I just want to spend approximately 15 minutes to discuss two issues. First of all, the importance of engineering for economic development. And second of all, which, which actually presents many opportunities and challenges. And second of all, what do we do here next door at the University of Nevada Reno? And each of these topics by itself could be an hour presentation. So my goal today is just to stimulate some discussion, but more than that, to stimulate your interest to come and visit us at the University of Nevada and find out what exactly is going on there. Thomas Friedman said that if you want more good jobs, you need to spawn more stiff jobs. And in the meeting that Ken referred to two years ago at the White House, President Obama made a comment in, and I was fortunate and honored to be present, that for every stiff jobs, we need 10,000 others. These others is engineers. And he proclaimed a national initiative to increase engineers by 10,000 per year for the next 10 years. Why is that? Because engineering is closely associated to economic development. There are some national facts for many years based on studies about economic development. And 85% of the measured growth in the US come due to technology change. And engineering is at the heart of it. Colleges of engineering provide ongoing education for the development of local creative capital. And current economic theories postulate that technological innovation and engineering is at the heart of it is the most important factor is for sustainable economic growth. More than that, in 2006, the National Academies was charged to assess the capability of the United States to compete in the 21st century and to maintain its world leadership. And they came up with a report, which is called the Gathering Storm. And this Gathering Storm is the nation's inability to generate competent technological talent. As a matter of fact, I have statistics, I'm not going to go over that, but 5% of the graduates here go to engineering. 50% of them are doing, are going engineering in China, which brings this very powerful statement by Paul Ottolini, the chief executive of Intel, which is that as a citizen, I hate the fact that the world is outpacing our education system, but as a global employer, I have the luxury of hiring the best engineers anywhere on earth. So the opportunity that engineering brings for economic development comes also with many great challenges. And so how, what do we do here to capitalize on the opportunities and meet the challenges? First of all, we try to create a college of vision and national prominence. I'm just going to briefly take you through our strategic vision, which is for us to achieve measurable national recognition as a leading institution in its class. And I just want to underline the word measurable national recognition. We want to be recognized not because we say we are the best, but because others say that we are the best. I just, also, we have a mission, and I'm not going to go through this, but I just want to tell you that core to our mission is to pursue technological advancements, research, in other words, that will be critical for the, to meet the technological, societal, and economic diversification needs of the states, of the state. Engineering is and has to be very important for the state's economy, and we're fully aware of that. Ken just mentioned that we are the only college in the NC system that are both nationally ranked for both its graduate and undergraduate programs. And our Civil Engineering Department has made it the top 50. Environmental Engineering, this is an older ranking, is also in the top 50. Mechanical Engineering and other programs are coming up the rankings. So we are a nationally ranked school with nationally ranked programs. Quick facts, we have five departments, eight majors, because some of the departments offer more than a major. We have the classical engineering majors. And we have minors, and many of you have heard probably all the noise. We made it national news to CBS for our newly created minors on advanced autonomous systems. And all of our departments offer graduate programs, masters and PhD. So we are a PhD-based educational college, which is very important, because if you know the top colleges in the country, let's say Berkeley or Stanford, they're not known for our undergraduate curriculum. Probably, we are better than them in that respect. They are known for the advancements of their research. So it's very critical even for undergraduate education that the College of Education education, that the College of Education is a research-based college. Now, I want to share with you a slide that I asked one of my colleagues in the business schools one and a half years ago to do a study and consider the College of Engineering as a business, as a business by itself, not including the impact that it has because of the workforce it produces, but as a business in itself. And let me give you these facts and the summary. The state spends on us about $11 million. That's our budget. We're a small college, and so 10 of those is almost, is practically spent in the state. Now, the College of Engineering generates expenditures based on research of about $17 million per year, and so if you add this, it's about, the direct impact is about $22 million. And if you apply an economic impact model, which is called implant model, this translates to about $42 million in the community. Now, at the same time, the college generated about $16 million in construction costs, and the direct impact in Nevada out of that was $15 million. And if you put the implant model, that generates $27 million. So, the total impact of the College of Engineering as a business, considered like a business, was about $70 million. And this is the summary. The State of Nevada invests $11 million, and the College of Engineering gives back to the community about $70 million, so it's a ratio of seven to one. And this does not include the impact due to the workforce development. As a matter of fact, workforce development is a major issue, and we need more engineers in Nevada, and I have the statistics for that, and I'm not going to go over this, but actually engineers are very critical to fulfill the governor's economic development plan and all its clusters, the goals of its clusters. So, I just want to walk you through right now some highlights of the college, of what we do right now with respect to economic development and what we have planned in the immediate future, because some of them, you're going to hear them in the news if you have not already heard, and some of them have made already mention. Don't worry. I'm about eight minutes before ending. Okay? We'll do it faster. Okay? Very good. Thank you. So, we have the major collaborations with federal agencies, and we have, we are well-supported by NSF and other major federal agencies. In Nevada, we have many contacts with the Department of Transportation and the City of Reno, and I can tell you that when it comes to the road infrastructure, we are with a one-stop place for Nevada. All of the roads and all of the bridges and all of the transportation and traffic efficiency have been studied in the College of Engineering. We are partnering with private industry in the state, and this is some sample of companies, and we are offering a graduate certificate in renewable energy to help our current professionals update themselves in the renewable energy. And we have a corporate partners program, we're partnering with industry to provide bridge between industry and academia, and these are the list of our corporate partners. We have 10, and we are growing, we're looking at an 11th right now, and we hope to grow that to 15 to 20. You have heard about the earthquake lab. This is a story of success, and the lab that you see right now, the university, is the biggest earthquake simulation facility in the country, leaps and bounds, but the biggest, and the biggest university-based facility in the world. You have to come and see it. It has multimillion dollars of equipment in shake tables and allows us to do projects that cannot be done anywhere else in the world. Here is a 165-foot bridge loaded with five trucks tested under intensive earthquake loadings, and here is a two-story, 165-foot-long building tested under earthquake loads. And we also do experiments in Japan. This test is in Japan, in the biggest shake table in, of the world in Japan. Look at the top of the specimen. We were the principal investigators for this experiment. We have an advanced gaming program for physically challenged individuals, and all of this translates into benefiting our students as graduates, even though also as an undergraduate currently. We are developing the Renewable Energy Center, the Cyber Security Center, and the Nevada Advanced Autonomous Systems Innovation Center, NASIC, which you're going to hear pretty soon in the news, and this is an outcome of the Knowledge Fund, of the Governance Knowledge Fund. The purpose of the center is to provide a bridge between the university and the industry, and the university, and the state of Nevada, actually, and the federal, many federal opportunities in the area of advanced autonomous systems. The center has a national vision, but at the same time, we want to spur research, innovation, and commercialization to advance the economic development of the state. And of course, you've heard about these autonomous systems, and you've heard about Nevada being designated as one of the test sites, and this is a very great opportunity for everybody around the country, so we are providing the infrastructure so that Nevada can compete. So finally, we are dreaming of a building that we will provide a major entrance of technology in the campus, and we call it the site, the Creativity, Innovation, Technology, and Renewables Building. It's a building that will house, this is our big dream in terms of capital improvements, will house engineering and other related fields to economic development. Is it done only here? Actually, you are very late. It's done everywhere else, and one of them is New York. And in a presentation last year, the governors of, the mayor's office said that they have one vision as a state for the next 30 years for economic development, technology, engineering, and science. That's it. So, finally, in looking for the future, for future engineers, we are reaching out in a very aggressive and very well-established program, the K-12 outreach. We have a mobile engineering lab that visits over 8,000 students a year here in the area, and we have many visits, recruitment visits for high schools around the state and the region. And with that, I want to thank you very much for your attendance. I know that engineering offers many opportunities, and I know that engineers change the world and therefore they spread the economy, and I want to thank you very much for the opportunity to talk, and I will be very happy to host you at the university. Come and see. You will see something that you didn't know, and I can tell you many times, I say that jokingly, but it's semi-serious. We are better known in Japan and China than in Reno, so come and visit with us. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Any questions?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Thank you so much, Dean, for coming to speak to us. Several months ago, I was visiting with some of your advisory board members who kind of filled me, brought me up to speed on some of the things you're doing. It's absolutely incredible what you're doing up at the university, clearly a player in our tier-one designation, and all of the work that we're doing now as a smarter city and trying to really embrace being, becoming a university town. Your work is what will get us there. Thank you.
Thank you very much, and I just want to tell you also that in the new city, the new building, the City of Reno, we call it, we call it the Sinclair Building, we'll find a better name, Engineering and NASIC that I just talked to you about is going to have a prominent place, and you're going to, it's the first step of the university towards a university town, a vision that all of us embrace, and we try to do something about it.
Yeah. I commend you, and Ken Crater just absolutely speaks so highly of you, and I think this should definitely be on our next agenda for our Technology and Innovation Council on our tours that we're starting to do, because I think it's fascinating, and I think this speaks volumes to the opportunities that we have in Reno that a lot of people don't really know about, and yours is renowned, it's incredible. So, I mean, I really commend you, and just really quickly, how can a city help you facilitate your success?
There are many things that we can do. First of all, be aware of what's going on, okay? Because there are many of the initiatives that we are going to take that need partnerships with the city. As I was leaving, as we speak right now, maybe this is over, there was a partnership with Economic Development Authorities and some of our faculty to pursue one of the advanced manufacturing initiatives by the federal government, and they told me to say something about that and make you specifically aware that this is going on. So therefore, the city, and partnership with the city, there are so many things that are happening, and we can discuss that in detail, but it is very critical that the city is aware, that the city is a partner, and there will be some hands-on help that we will need, and we can talk about that. Yeah.
Great. Thank you.
Thank you so much. Appreciate it.
Next on the agenda is item D2, Mr. Gibson.
Mr. Mayor, members of the city council, for the record, Lee Gibson with the RTC of Washoe County. I want to take this opportunity to thank you for the opportunity to be here today. We're going to walk you through an overview of the Virginia Street Corridor, in fact, building on the dean's comments, where he just talked about how we need to focus on a university town and look at ways to better integrate the university into our day-to-day affairs. I'd like to think the Virginia Street Corridor plan that we're developing is really going to help us do that by creating the transportation linkages that will help tie all of us together, all of us together with the university and help realize some of the economic benefits. And one last plug for the university, we have a number of alumni working on this very project from the College of Engineering. So with that, what I would like to do is introduce Amy Cummings. She's the Director of Planning. She'll walk you through the presentation. We'll be as quick as we can, and then we'll both be here to answer any questions that the council may have with regard to the project. So, Amy?
Thank you very much. Amy Cummings with RTC. And this is our bottom line upfront in terms of the schedule. We're wrapping up our planning corridor study now in the next month or so. We're rolling into preliminary engineering later this year and also partnering with the city as we work with UNR on their campus master plan. So, the UNR master plan is going to guide some of the refinement of the concepts in the northern part of the corridor. And then, of course, after that, we'll be working on final design and, of course, construction in the 2017, 2018 timeframe. We're also trying to get in the pipeline for FTA funding so that we can have some federal dollars to match our local dollars on this project. These just illustrate the problems that you all know are significant in terms of walkability and wheelchair access, but there are some good stories. These are some new curb cuts that were put in last year, and we do have some great examples of what we want to see in terms of encouraging people to be outside in a vibrant place and improving access to bus stops. This is the condition out there today, and under the proposed concept, it's a little hard to see on this screen, the basic number of lanes is proposed to stay the same, but the lanes would be narrower, which slows people down. We recommend going from 35 to a 25 mile-per-hour speed limit, keeping as much of the on-street parking as we can, but the main critical feature of this is widening those sidewalks to about six feet wide. There are a few places where there's room for some street trees for shade, so we want to do that, but really improving our wheelchair accessibility is the number-one concern. And this is another street view of what's out there today. This one, the lighting is a little better. You can see what it would look like with those six-foot sidewalks, upgrades to the lighting and to some of the signage are things that we could accomplish in this as well. Bicycle connectivity to UNR is key, but we're really recommending focusing on Evans. So, you're on the other side of Virginia Street and then tying down in Holcomb, where we already have a great bike facility, have much lower traffic volumes on this side as opposed to Virginia Street, and I wanted to let you know that RTC is working on this bike path between the road and the railroad track up on Evans this year. So, this will be another great way for folks to connect all the way from Evans down to Midtown. The gateway to the university between 8th and 9th Street has been a big focus of this study. We've identified a lot of issues in terms of pedestrian circulation, bicycle movements, traffic circulation. A lot of this is going to come back to input from the UNR master plan, because land use is going to be a critical factor in the ultimate recommendation for this area. Linking in the Rapid is one of our big initiatives as well. We want to connect the over 7,000 trips that are on transit on Virginia Street today to all of the students and faculty. So, we're proposing two new Rapid stations. Right now, it stops at 4th Street Station, but this proposal would get us up to serve the south end of campus at Mandanita Hall, which you see here, upgrading the crosswalks and improving the sidewalks in that area. We want to make sure it's compatible with university architecture and styles, and this is one of the things that will certainly be refined during the campus master plan in terms of what the stations look like, but this is an artist's rendering and just very preliminary. The northernmost station for the Rapid would be up by Lawler, and we're proposing a traffic circle that has the benefit of being the northern terminus and letting the bus turn around, as well as providing some traffic calming in this area where we have pretty high speeds of people going southbound, and helping traffic flows with special events coming out of the garage, so it has many potential benefits for us. And this is what that station could potentially look like, but again, this will all be refined in the campus master plan. And finally, on the far south end of the study, and we're looking at transit and safety issues for the whole length, this is the area south of Patriot, south of foothills, and this is in the Demone Ranch area. We have speeds of 50 to 55 miles an hour, and we've had some fatal crashes there, so we want to look at narrowing or reducing the number of travel lanes and adding a multimodal lane to hopefully slow the speed limit down to about 45 miles per hour. And of course, we are not finished with our community outreach as we go into the design, and the UNR master plan will definitely continue to be out, talking with local businesses and residents as we refine all of these concepts. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Any questions?
I have a couple of questions. One of my questions is, how far, how far north has this Virginia Street Corridor, how far north does it go in Virginia?
This study stops at McCarran. We really stopped at the northern end of the university where it was the transit service that was really guiding this, so this particular study doesn't go north of McCarran.
Okay, so some of the safety concerns relative to the upper part of Virginia Street near the Bonanza where the pedestrian fatality occurred recently is not part of this?
Correct. Those are being addressed separately.
Okay.
What I would like to add to the record is, we've started this study well over about a year, year and a half ago, so this has been, what you're seeing today is really a culmination of over, over a one-year period's worth of work.
Questions? I guess, you know, I've been watching this study, and it originally started in a way that I thought it was going to go, and it's not going the way. I thought it was just going to be a Midtown area study, and when I see south of Patriot and I see up to McCarran, I see a very large study area, and let me just continue. I think that, at least, the priority that I feel is getting in and getting the Midtown area done, and I would call that California Avenue to Mount Rose Street, but maybe Plum Lane, and I know we've pushed it off already a cycle, and you all have become very, when you get down to project development, you've been phasing projects. Moana was phased, the southeast connector is phased. At what point are you going to say, we're going to phase this as Midtown Phase 1, University Phase 2, south of McCarran Phase 3, north of McCarran Phase 4? I mean, are you ready to drop that in? Because I don't want more delay in Midtown, personally.
I appreciate that comment. Thank you. And this particular study, the limits were defined by the transit vision that came out of the Regional Transportation Plan, which included extending the Rapid all the way from South Meadows to UNR. So, that was really what set our project limits when we started, but of course, we knew that Midtown had huge issues, because what's key to transit in Midtown is making the sidewalks accessible so that people can walk to the bus stations more easily. And there are many needs, and that's absolutely at the top of our priority list to continue with the Midtown improvements, and we're really advancing it as quickly as we can, given the time. Over the last year, we spent to get the design concept in place, and now we're ruling, rolling into the preliminary design and the NEPA, and then we'll go into final design, and then 2017 is when we start, you know, the right-of-way.
Okay, but to continue that, and I appreciate it came out of the transit connection, and I appreciate your concern to have a healthy and restore a healthy transit system here, and there may be some funding kind of compatibility with that, and I understand that, but I think, you know, I don't know if we would need to take a formal action here and say, we want to see Midtown done, but having said that, on the funding side, I sat through your preliminary budget workshop over the weekend, last Friday, and I saw you identifying new starts for both Fourth and Prater, which is further along, and for this one, and I just want to understand how realistic that is to get both of those federal funds, and if we're going to sign those funding categories to both these projects, which really would be in competition with each other, I think we need a statement in the Regional Transportation Plan that says we're prepared to put local money in there if this grant funds, these federal grant funds do not come, because we know what has happened on federal reauthorization over the last several years.
I'll attempt a comment. First off, in the New Starts, Small Starts Appropriations Bill, there's over $2.1 billion available nationwide. Within the Tiger Program of the recent Transportation Appropriations Bill that was passed, over $600 million was appropriated, $100 million more than last year. The strategy of the RTC has been always to maximize the return of federal funds to our region. A dollar of sales or fuel tax saved through... A dollar of sales or fuel tax saved through obtaining a federal dollar means a dollar of sales or fuel tax that's now available for a local project that's in the plan. As you may recall from our Regional Transportation Plan, and Amy can correct me if I'm wrong, but I think we have something like $1.6 billion over the next 20 years of unfunded needs for both transit and streets and highways. So the logic behind seeking the Small Starts and the New Starts monies is to make sure we stretch those dollars. We also believe that, now I'm getting lost a little bit, we also, we think within our project budgets, we have the fiscal capacity to do these projects. We receive federal formula monies, we receive CMAC monies, we'll take a look as we go through the project development, get better engineering cost estimates, look at our operating costs, make adjustments. But we think there is a reasonable chance, we've talked to the FTA, the FTA is encouraging us to apply, these are funds that are regulated through the FTA, they're not congressional earmarks, and we think we have a good chance. That's what the discussion so far. We expect to receive our project development letter this week for Fourth Prater, and we'll be submitting a project development letter, I think it's in March, April, for Virginia Street.
Okay, and I get that, but you're also sitting on a lot of RTC 5 money, some of which Councilmember Jordan mentioned it, your board may be sitting there longer if you go to EIS on southeast connector. And so it's my opinion, as one person sitting here, is that local money needs to get shaken loose for our local priorities if that project's held up or in other projects. Because I see the projects that, you know, I value going through the federal wringer and others going with local money, and I've said that before, but let me move on to another point, is it's going to be very, a lot of conflicting opinions when you get out there, bike lanes, sidewalks, on-street parking. I would like at some point in the process, for whatever the design is, to come back here for us to have it out here and give the agreement that this is the design we're adopting, and maybe even drop it into the interlocal mid-year, you know, on the phasing or the category, and be more detailed on our interlocal so we understand what you're doing on our behalf with our projects. And so I just want to get that out there, too.
Neila?
Could you bring the slide back up of the timeline? I'm sorry. If we've moved on and it's too difficult, don't worry.
Do we have a controller? Hold on, everybody.
Okay, oh, there we go. Just to Jenny on one part with regards to Midtown, a number of the merchants did request that some of the sidewalk improvements not occur too soon to them just opening their doors and not being able to get their feet under them and build some clientele and some capital before we started digging up in front of their businesses. So that, part of them being pushed out was for that reason. I guess my question is this, if there was some projects to potentially be dropped in in the event of some delays of some other projects, the gateway to the university, has there been any design concepts and where might that be able to be expedited? Because I feel like that's certainly a project that we could move forward on sooner rather than later in the event some other projects get pushed back or delayed.
The status of that area is we've identified some pretty specific lower-cost improvements that could be made to the streetscape in terms of lighting and sidewalks in a few areas, but we're waiting until we get into the UNR master plan to figure out the direction on the land use side from the city and UNR before we complete the design concepts for transportation.
But I would add, in our discussions with UNR, they have expressed an interest to get to that particular issue first and work through that issue, because we see some opportunities for transportation at that gateway point, they see some opportunities for their campus development, and also for the accessibility and safety of their students and faculty. So I think we're going to try to get to that issue and deal with some of those issues early on in the design effort so we can get some answers, because I think there are some opportunities there.
No, and I would agree that as we move forward with being a university town and embracing how we physically get there in a more visibly and appealing manner and safer way, a more expedited way, coming off the freeway, I would just like to go on record and say that that, to me, is an absolute priority, particularly in light of some other projects potentially being put on hold for a period of time, is how can we move forward with that one?
Jared?
We agree.
And that would be the direction that I would give as well, is that that gateway from the university down south to the center of town and even beyond is absolutely critical. And I commend you for the public outreach that you detail, just poignantly detail in getting all of the citizens and user groups involved. You've been recognized at the national level for your planning because of the success that you have in that. So if there's any suggestion that the community is not involved, that truly is an error. And I know that you work very closely with our staff representing our goals and objectives and needs and our mission as well. And that's indeed why you respond and report to a Board of Directors that's represented by all of the elected agencies within our community, and that's where you take your direction from, in a very responsible manner, and you do keep the community's mission in focus. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, if I could, just one more. I want to just mention, we cannot do the work here that we do for the city without the help of Bill Thomas, Claudia Hansen, Fred Turnier, Steve Manell, and Charlotte Honey, and John Flansburgh. They're almost, we have a seamless relationship with everybody, we consider them friends, and the stuff you see here and in other projects, we couldn't do without them. So we really appreciate their time and effort. So, thank you.
Thank you. Moving on, we're at item F1, our public hearings. Madam Secretary, has all the notices been sent?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, for the record, proper notice was given, no correspondence was received.
Thank you, open the public hearing.
Okay, then I need to read the ordinance then first, which is Bill Number 6889. Ordinance to amend Title 18, Chapter 18.08 of the Reno Municipal Code entitled Zoning Changing, zoning to 1, change zoning designations from HC Hotel Casino on 29.65 acres, CC Community Commercial on 35.91 acres, and TC Washoe County Tourist Commercial on 12.27 acres, to MU WGRC Mixed-Use Western Gateway Regional Center Overlay from GR Washoe County's General Rural to OS Open Space on 10 acres, from PSF Washoe County Public and Semi-Public Facilities to PF Public Facility on 47.78 acres, from GR Washoe County's General Rural to PF Public Facility on .55 acres, from GC Washoe County's General Commercial to CC Community Commercial on 16.49 acres, from I Washoe County Industrial to CC Community Commercial on 5.79 acres, from I Industrial to CC Community Commercial on 12.46 acres, from UT 40 Unincorporated Transition 40 acres, to LLR 1 Large-Lot Residential 1 acre on 2.63 acres, from GR Washoe County's General Rural to LLR 1 Large-Lot Residential 1 acre on 7.66 acres, from MDS Washoe County's Medium-Density Suburban to SF 15 Single-Family Residential, 15,000 square feet on 3.48 acres, and from GR Washoe County's General Rural to LLR 5 Large-Lot Residential on .5 acres, on 5.91 acres, in the area formerly identified as the West 4th Street Transit-Oriented Development Corridor, Western Gateway Plan Area, and 2, change the zoning designation from MU MVTC Mixed-Use North Virginia Transit Corridor Overlay to AC Arterial Commercial on 34.25 acres, CC Commercial, Community Commercial on .35 acres, I Industrial at 22.18 acres, IB Industrial Business on 8.1 acres, IC Industrial Commercial at 31.82 acres, MF 14 Multi-Family 14 Units per acre on 128.77 acres, MF 21 Multi-Family 21 Units per acre on 1.5 acres, MF 30 Multi-Family 30 Units per acre on 193.67 acres, and PF Public Facility at 171.81 acres, in certain areas formerly identified within the North Virginia Street Transit-Oriented Development Corridor Plan, and 3, change the zoning designation from SF 6 Single-Family Residential 6,000 square feet to MU MVTC Mixed-Use North Virginia Transit Corridor Overlay on a 64.05 acre parcel located 1,280 feet northwest of the intersection of North Virginia Street and Lemon Drive, to get with other matters properly relating thereto.
Thank you, we're on F1, Mr. Mayor.
Good afternoon, Claudia Hansen, Planning Engineering Manager, I think that is our longest description that we've had yet on one of these. Just to put this in context, this is step 2, actually, I think it's step 3 of the update to the transit corridors. Under E3 today, you certified the master plan amendment that was found in conformance of the regional plan last month at regional planning. And then this is the map amendment associated with that, so this is any zone changes that needed to follow the update of the transit corridors. And then G1 on today's agenda is the adoption of the standards associated with that. So this is a very, this is an explanation of why it has taken so long, there's many steps with this. We've included comments from property owners throughout the Todd corridors, and those changes are reflected in this. And Nathan Gilbert is available for any specific questions.
Okay. I have no public comment on this, so anybody, any questions, motion? It'll be on you. Approve the, uphold the recommendation of the Planning Commission first and then refer.
Okay, is that all one motion? Move to uphold the recommendation of the Planning Commission?
Got a motion, a second, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries unanimously. Motion to refer.
A motion to refer?
Got a motion and a second, all those in favor?
Aye.
Okay, item G1.
Which is Ordinance Number 6319, and ordinance amending the Reno Municipal Code Title 18 Annexation and Land Development, Chapter 18.08, Zoning, Section 18.08.101, entitled Establishment and Purpose of Base and Overlay Zoning District, Section 18.08.201, entitled Permitted Uses by Base Zone District, Section 18.08.301, entitled Non-Residential and Mixed-Use Base Zoning Districts, and Section 18.08.405, entitled Regional Center and Transit Corridor Overlay Districts, together with other matters properly relating thereto.
Have motion, second. All in favor say aye. Those that oppose, no. Motion carries unanimously. Ordinance adoption, item G2.
Which is Ordinance Number 6320, ordinance amending the Reno Municipal Code Title 18 Annexation and Land Development, Chapter 18.08, Zoning, Section 18.08.202, entitled Additional Regulations for Principal Uses to Allow For a Change in the Length of Time That May Be Granted for a Time Extension for Open Lot Parking in the Downtown Reno Regional Center and the Redevelopment Districts, together with other matters properly relating thereto.
Have motion, second. All in favor say aye. Those that oppose, no. Motion carries unanimously. Ordinance adoption, G3.
Which is Ordinance Number 6321, ordinance annexing to and making part of the city of Reno certain specifically described territory being 5.435 acres of property located on the north side of Charlene Drive, 79-75 Charlene Drive, 720 feet west of its intersection with Military Road, in the special planning area Reno-Stead Joint Corridor Plan, Medium-Density Suburban Land Use Designation Washoe County, Nevada, together with other matters properly relating thereto.
Have motion, second. All in favor say aye. Those that oppose, no. Motion carries unanimously. Ordinance adoption, G4.
Which is Ordinance Number 6322, and ordinance authorizing the issuance of the city of Reno, Nevada, 2002 Special Assessment District Number 4 Somerset Parkway Local Improvement Refunding Bond Series 2014, providing the form, terms, and conditions of the bonds and other details in connection therewith, and providing other matters relating thereto.
Who do not?
Have motion, second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those that oppose, no. Motion carries unanimously. Now we'll go to ordinance introductions, resolution, excuse me. We'll go to resolutions. H1.
Resolution Number 6889, resolution donating Reno Access Advisory Committee funds to the Down Syndrome Network Northern Nevada to defray expenses associated with the bringing the I Can Chine Recreation Training Program to Reno to teach people with various disabilities how to ride a bicycle in the amount of $2,500.
All in favor say aye. Those that oppose, no. Motion carries unanimously. No, it's not H2.
Resolution Number 6890, resolution rescinding Resolutions 5081, 5113, 522, 523, 6513, and 6524 relating to Neighborhood District Councils, now known as Neighborhood Advisory Boards, as advisory bodies to the city of Reno, and directing that a text amendment be processed to Title 18 Annexation and Land Development to remove notice and other requirements for local government advisory boards and neighborhood advisory boards which are inconsistent with this resolution.
Yeah, I have comment on this. I didn't check the charter or Book of Parliamentary Procedure, but my understanding of resolutions is they're expressions of intent of a body, and that expression of intent can change over time. And so you can have one one-year, and then three years later, have another intent. And so I'm not entirely sure that it's necessary to go and repeal resolutions if you have an adopting resolution that follows. So I'd like, and I'm looking lady clerk, but maybe with assistance of the city attorney, I haven't looked at what our charter talks about resolutions, I don't think resolutions are even mentioned, really, but maybe in a Book of Parliamentary Procedure, we can have a look at this, because it takes staff time, you know, time, I'm sure someone put in a few hours to dig up what resolutions were relative and prepare a staff report, and I'm not sure we're doing the best practice on this, so.
Tracy Chase, Reno City Attorney's Office.
I have items for people. I have items.
Okay, okay, I'll mention it that time.
I have motion, second. All in favor say aye. Those that oppose, no. Motion carries unanimously. Now we're down to H3, let me have H3, I have a person, Mr. Church, you wish to speak, Jeff Church. Jeff Church, you wish to speak. Mr. Church must accept. I'm saying you vote in. Support mutual aid and automatically deny.
Mr. Mayor, this is Resolution Number 6891, resolution adopting the 2014 amended cooperative agreement for mutual aid between the city of Reno, Truckee Meadows Fire Protection District, and Sierra Fire Protection District.
I have a few questions for the chief on this. Mr. Chief, has the county adopted this?
For the record, Mike Hernandez, Reno Fire Chief, Mr. Mayor, Mr. Manager, members of the council, it is my understanding that this item did go to the Board of Fire Commissioners yesterday, and it was unanimously approved.
Okay, so on the mutual aid agreement, there's a provision that it'll be reviewed once a year, and that's, how's that going to work?
Typically, what would occur is that on the, on or before the anniversary date, the chief officers would gather together and discuss the nuts and bolts, if you will, of the agreement, and if there is areas that need improvement, enhancement, removal, we would agree on those, and then we would bring those back to their respective bodies for adoption.
Do you have a sense of when we're doing mutual aid, what we're going to assist them on and what sort of issues, and when they assist us, what sort of issues they're assisting on? I mean, what are the, are these, what's the prevailing reason why everyone's, we're crossing jurisdictions?
Structure fires.
Structure fires?
Correct.
Okay.
And to speak more specifically with respect to how aid is distributed amongst the two agencies, we have some challenges with respect to jurisdictional boundaries. We have areas of our community that are not clearly defined with respect to what's in the city and what's not. We know, I mean, we've got GIS mapping, but as far as continuity, you can stand on one corner and be inside the city of Reno, walk across the street and you would be in the county. And that presents a problem to response agencies in that when a call is reported, oftentimes the dispatchers do what they would consider their best guess or their most educated guess on where that proper jurisdiction belongs to and who the responding agency is. So we get into some areas where we have mutual responses, if you will. responses, if you will. And oftentimes, the county may respond into the city, Verdi, North Valleys, in the south, only to discover that is a Reno, City of Reno response, and they would notify us. We would respond accordingly, or they would tell us that we've got, you know, we've got the issue under control, and then we would just, you know, not respond. And, and the inverse is true. Oftentimes, we would respond into the county and realize that it's their call. We would notify them. They would show up, or they would tell us, you know, we would tell them, we've got it under control, and then we would just pass the information on accordingly.
Okay.
But with respect to actual, I'm sorry, Mr. Mayor.
Go ahead. Have your name, step on.
With respect to actual calls for assistance, I would say they're all with respect, they're all fire-related.
Okay. But that boundary, is, the boundary fuzziness is something that causes a problem for you out there?
Yes.
Okay.
Something the chief's been working with, stuff like that.
Okay.
You go to, go into mutual aid, mutual aid, that's something the chief's been working with.
Okay. Well, I'll just note that we just annexed a property that 14 years ago through a planning process with the county, we agreed would be in an area that we would be annexing over time. And, and I think that boundary is shaping up better, and maybe we have to think about some of the other areas around our city where we need to do some of that thinking on our boundaries.
Anyway, which number is that?
H3, Mr. Mayor.
H3, that's a couple of questions.
Saga?
Saga. All in favor say aye. Those that oppose, no. Motion carries unanimously. Item... I have one, one.
Uh-oh.
Can we get item I11123?
We can do whatever you want, Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Mayor, Tracy Chase, you would have to read the ordinances separately and have a separate motion.
Yes.
Then, I'm going to read all three ordinances. You can vote on them each separately. This is item I1.2. It says, Bill Number 6890. It's an ordinance amending Title 4 of the Reno Municipal Code, entitled, Business License Code, by amending Chapter 4.04 thereof, which is untitled by entitling the chapter, General Provisions, and by amending Section 4.04.020 to exempt sales of First Amendment protected expressive merchandise from the business license requirement and providing other matters of property relating thereto. From there, we go to I1.3, which is Bill Number 6891. And what that is, is an ordinance amending Title 5 of the Reno Municipal Code, entitled, Privileged Licenses, Permits, and Franchises, by amending Chapter 5.14, entitled, First Amendment Artisans and Sidewalk Speakers, by changing the name of the chapter to First Amendment Protected Expressive Merchandise and Displays on Sidewalks, by amending Section 5.14.10 thereof, to add new definitions, by amending Section 5.14.020, to clarify the purpose of the chapter, and by amending Section 5.14.040, to remove the business license requirement and providing other matters of property relating thereto. And finally, we go to item I1.4, which is, which is ordinance number 6892, which is an ordinance amending Title 8 of the Reno Municipal Code, entitled, Public Peace, Safety, and Morals, by amending Chapter 8.23 thereof, entitled, Parks and Recreation, by amending Section 8.23.075, entitled, Park Permits, by exempting display and sales of First Amendment protected expressive merchandise and providing other matters of property relating thereto. So that covers all four of the items.
Okay. And then we'll take motion separately, right? But I have public comment first? Do you need a staff report? Okay. Well, come on, staff. Give us a little report.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, Mr. City Manager, council members, Michael Chomp, Business Relations Manager for the Business License Division. What's before you, these, these ordinances, and I know you heard earlier from, during public comment about some concerns with these ordinances, this is really a way to at least start fixing our existing ordinances as they relate to First Amendments, the First Amendment, by removing the business license requirement and parks permit requirement for artists expressing with expressive merchandise. We will be back to continue to clean up the ordinances and codes in Reno Municipal Code. But this is a step that, again, we have worked with, with Mr. White and the attorney's office. If you have additional questions, is prepared to expand on what those, what those additions were made and suggestions that we did receive. So with that, I would ask that council refer these to a second reading.
Any questions this time, staff? Yes. Ms. Sheevy.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I've been following this very closely. What I would like to know, I've seen a lot of email exchanges, and I think in email, things can get misconstrued, and they can sound very differently. I would really strongly recommend that Mr. White sit down with the attorney that's working on it, because Mr. Scow is no longer there, right? Is that correct?
Yes. Ms. Toller is the attorney that's working with Mr. White.
Okay. And, because what concerns me is, how much staff time have we spent on this? How much?
We've, we have...
Crazy.
Hundreds of hours into this, about 20 months' worth of work.
And so I think a lot of the issue is that there, this lack of communication, because we just can't do it through email. And I, and I obviously, you know, Mr. White understands this process, but I also think we're sending a message to artists in our city, blocking them, that we're making it much more difficult. I'm hearing a lot of different people tell me in the artist community that we really need to start embracing artists, and I think that that's very critical. But I think we also have sort of a great tool in Mr. White that we could use, if you would be willing to sit down with our attorney and really try to hash some of this stuff out. And you guys might not get to, you know, what both sides want, but I think you can get close enough. Would you agree, Mr. White?
I agree. Actually, I've offered to do that, but...
Sir, do you want to speak? Come up to the microphone. You know better than Mr. White. Come on.
Sorry about that, Mayor.
That's all right.
You know, there, I find myself in a unique position now of actually defending the city, being hard, of being an advocate for the city, you know, protecting it from your staff. I agree that, yeah, we, I wouldn't mind sitting down with the city attorney. There are some legal issues that need to be addressed in the language of these things. I wish that they would take the code provisions that I've presented you all, you know, that I take theirs and I revise them, and I try to go right down the middle of the road. I try to protect the city, the business interests, the rights of artists, everybody. I'm not trying to favor anybody, but I wish you'd all review those code revisions that I've provided you as an alternative to staff, so we can kind of get a feeling for where we're going with both of these. And I wish that maybe a couple of city council members could sit in on a meeting.
And I would be happy to do that. Mr. White, let me ask you this. Is there another city that you think has a code that's sufficient?
To tell you the truth, no. This is all new ground.
Don't tell me no, because it might get impossible to get there.
And I'll be honest with you, I think that the codes that, that are sponsored by artists of the community and of the nonprofits that we, that I presented you, I think they're the best darn codes that have ever been written for any city in this, in this country, to be honest with you. This is all new stuff. Other cities haven't really dealt with a lot of this stuff. I think the code provisions that, that I'm trying to provide you do a much better job than even Sparks does.
Yeah.
But Sparks goes further than Reno does, you know?
Yeah. I just really would like to get us past this, because staff is spending a lot of time doing this.
That's right.
And with the amount of, I think, artists that this is going to affect, is, you know, we, we kind of need to move on. So I really encourage that everyone comes together and, and hashes this out, because I think we've spent way too many resources on it.
I agree. I've spent hundreds of hours myself. I've been doing this for 11 years with your city staff.
Okay.
11 years, sir.
All right. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Do you have something? Do you have something?
I did. I just wanted to say, have, have we not, you guys have not met in person to discuss any of these items? Our legal staff? And, and I understand there's some background here?
We have communications with Mr. White.
But, but not...
But you mean, person, she's asking, have you sat down with the table and gone through them with him?
Right.
Or are we just saying we're legal, and there, you're an artist, and...
Julie Toller, Deputy City...
No, sir. Mr. White, now I'm on, you know me, Mr. White.
Julie Toller, Deputy City Attorney. Mr. White and I have exchanged numerous emails, but a sit-down meeting has not occurred.
I would like, I'd like to see a sit-down meeting and go through them and see what they could.
And, Mr. Mayor, I would agree with that with, with a couple of ground rules. Giving it a very narrow window of time in order to either try to work this out or not. And frankly, I have found, Mr. White, after a number of your emails, I have found you to be insulting and disrespectful and borderline bullying. So my concern is with the ground rules, rules relative to meeting in person, that I have concern that an in-person meeting may be less productive if that type of an approach is, is brought forward in a personal meeting. And I think staff, I agree that a lot of stuff can get misinterpreted and misconstrued in emails, but having read a number of your emails about the fifth one in, I, I found you to be offensive.
Mr. Mayor, just really quickly, we did sit down with Mr. White. As a matter of fact, it was Councilman Breckus, I believe, and it was Councilman Delgado. And I thought it went very well. It was very informative, and he was very respectful. I think when he does not get answers back from staff, and he's asking them for these reports, he tends to get frustrated, and I can understand. So I think the best thing to do is to sit down at the table and, and come together. But, and I'm sure you will be very courteous when you sit down with staff.
Absolutely.
Thank you.
And I hope you'll entertain my commentary.
Well, then, if we do sit down, I mean, there will be courtesies, and all the way, and I expect Mr. White will do that. And, and, and Mr. White has to understand that once legal counsel looks at it, if they end up blessing it, then that's it. I mean, we're going, you're not a lawyer, but we're going to listen to your input, because you've done some of this before, and we're going to listen to it. And we want to. But I want, I do want to draw this to a head within the next 30 days, and let's stop this, because we've gone long enough.
Well, Mr. Mayor, I had a thought. You know, when these come forward, there's like four different ordinances, and of course, I know it's embedded in different parts, but maybe we just take a first baby step. Like the 4.020 that I saw, I think we're real close there. So maybe if we want to just take baby steps and then build upon that, because I think whatever we adopt on the first one will set the tone for taking the other, you know, interwoven. So if that's an approach that staff thinks has merit, business license staff, let's do, you know, don't be afraid to bring it one at a time so that we can, you know, get that done, and then it will set the tone.
I don't want to drag this out for 12 months. We don't, we've already dragged it out for five or six months. I think that in the next 30 to 60 days, we should be able to do this. If not, we're going to have to adopt something and live with it and take the consequences.
We've shaken... Mr. Mayor, if I can, please. I just want for the record to know that staff is not impeding working with Mr. White.
Oh, I understand that.
We've been working with Mr. White. I just want to make that clear. And Councilmember Jordan was right on with her assertion and, and concerns, and staff has the same concerns. What we're proposing today, and we could stay down in the weeds on this line by line for years. And we have an unconstitutional code that exists today. This is really simply a stopgap, if you will, to make the changes. The reason it's in three different areas is because the licensing requirement is in three different areas. And the reason we have the definitions, the new definitions, is because we can't exempt something that isn't defined in code. So, so I just wanted to make that point, that, that we will continue to work with Mr. White or...
Well, I don't want it by correspondence. I want it sitting at the table, figuring out what you're doing. Let's go through it item by item and come back with the best thing, and what your staff and the legal counsel. And I saw the lawyer walking up, and I want to see him walk back up and tell me what he's going to say.
I'm probably making him nervous.
You have to sit down now.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, for the record, John Shipman.
See, I didn't have, I got that authority.
Mr. Chomp said essentially what I was going to say, which is, you know, following on Councilmember Breckus's comment. Everybody believes you have to draw a circle, you know, and, and this is protected activity. And the difficulty becomes, you know, where that circle border gets driven, gets, gets, you know, there might be some differences of opinion about where that circle border actually goes. What you're looking at today is really just a stopgap to, to exempt these activities from our code. Our code has got a problem right now, and we can exempt it. There's still going to have to be the second part that's going to be this, the special events that is going to be required, you know, there's going to be significant workshopping, and there's going to have to be significant going across the table. So that's my only concern, is I'd hate for us to go away and say, well, we're going to bring back the one and only in 60 days. What we would recommend is that you adopt this today, and if it doesn't meet, you know, Mr. White's or anybody else's requirements, that can be changed with this next chunk.
Absolutely.
So this is really a stopgap measure.
Mr. Mayor, may I?
Yes.
Mr. Shipman, I think, I have a faith that if you're challenged on this, and we don't adopt this, and we're still working, that you can make a case to the court and say, look, we are being very good faith in working toward this pending legal doctrine, whatever, the, you know, the plaintiff may be, you know, the person that you've been directed to work with. So I'm not buying that argument. Okay?
Yeah.
Well, I, I don't have a problem. I know we've got to make some changes on this, but I don't have a problem making the adoptions and sitting down and going through them with Mr. White and somebody else, and coming back with some proposals. But we got to have a ground to start with, and I think these are the items we start with the ground and then try to clean them up. All right, I have three or four people wish to speak, but you've already spoke once, and you're not going to repeat yourself, are you? Come on up, Mr. White. But I'm only giving you three now.
Okay. Just to cover some points that we need to cover on, on the code. Some errors in the, in the existing code that they're asking you to pass now. Number one, t-shirts. That opens the door for clothing. You don't want to be doing that, and you don't have to be doing that. Number two, tattooing. Tattooing should be restricted inside of buildings.
You said you weren't going to repeat yourself. You said these earlier.
The, the condition of First Amendment protected speech does not rest upon being shown in a gallery. The condition of reaching First Amendment protected speech has nothing to do with how much money the item sells for. Under the heading artistic self-expression, they give A and B, and they're opposite of one another. Under A, they say that artistic self-expression is, is, I forget which one is which, is not normally functional or utilitarian. Then under B, they say it is normally functional and utilitarian. These, the most important thing about these codes, Mayor, and city council members, is that these codes provide clear instruction to law enforcement, the guys on the street. They're going to be walking up to a vendor or a person selling stuff on, on the public property. They have to clearly understand the difference between a protected speaker and a commercial vendor. And that's what these codes need to do, and they don't do that. So I, I thank you for suggestion that we all sit down together, because we need to meet with each other. The council members have met, and I think we've really moved along when I met with them. It was a great meeting. We all walked out of there, and I think we all learned something. And I think that you folks can learn something from me. I mean, I'm an artist. I just happen to have all this experience in the federal courts that you folks may not have. You see what I mean? So let's do that. Let's sit down. Maybe a council member or two would join us in that meeting. We'll be respectful. I'm not going to be uptight with anybody. I want to get this information across to everybody. I just want, I want what you want. I want to get this settled before spring comes. And then the other thing is, Mayor, let's tap the talent. You have a wealth of talent in this community. Let's tap that talent for economic development. Let's get tourism dollars coming here, and let's get those tourist dollars staying here in our local economy, not getting sent back over the hill. But let's do it in a very narrowly tailored fashion, where we limit it to specifically artistic self-expression in the fine arts, not all this other stuff.
Okay.
Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you.
And thank you.
David Shakar, you have something else, David? Something new, or you repeating yourself?
Good afternoon, Your Honor. No, it's, hopefully not a repeat, sir. I would like to say that if... I would like to say that if we take upon the suggestion of the city attorney who said, go ahead and essentially pass this and then work it out, I strongly recommend against that, because ordinances have a way of being, becoming entrenched. One of the things I would like to really make the council aware of, we are protecting the special events. The artist code is more restrictive. Artists cannot go into the special events. I used to do that a couple times last year with my easel, and that's probably the reason why they said they don't want somebody in the special event exercising their fully protected First Amendment rights, because it could cause confusion or dilute the event for the special event permit holder. They pay a lot of money. Now, even though a lot of those people come from California, and they Californicate our town by, after they've spent the money, they're selling stuff like, I saw fake dog poop made in China, you know, it's, they have a right to sell that. One of the reasons why I appreciate what the staff has done is they've worked long and hard on this. However, when they were exercising their good intentions to try to improve this, for example, there were some words that were very confusing. On the business license is good that there is not a requirement for licensure for artists on that, because that comports with the Ninth Circuit Court of Appeal. But there was a language in there about proponent. We talked about that. That would mean that an artist agent, we could have some seller do that. That's really opening up a lot of trouble for the city. If we could just pass that code without the word proponent in there, that would work out. There's a couple of other things that the staff, I think it was the community development, had thrown in there. There were words that seem like they're helpful, like merchandise sales are expanded beyond what the Ninth Circuit said, because they're using the words opinions, views, and ideas. That expands it beyond the Ninth Circuit, Mr. Mayor, and that is something that we should not do. We should only abide by what the Ninth Circuit Court of Appeals has said is fully protected First Amendment art. And we really need to get a definition for the, what constitutes an artist selling fully protected First Amendment protected merchandise, and what is commercial, and have a definition so that the police officers on the street will not be confused if they try to issue a citation for somebody that maybe should not be cited. So, we could always put this ordinance on hold if there's any confusion, and I would urge that until it's resolved.
I personally don't want to put it on hold. I want us to correct what we've got, and we'll go forward. But I want to, you know, I want to ask you one question. If somebody's having a special event in a park, do you think you should be able to go into the park and participate without participating in the program?
That's what I was saying, Your Honor, we're protecting the special events. Artists are not going to be going into the special events. We have free speech.
Are you going to stay outside the special event?
Yes, sir, absolutely. We have free speech zones.
Okay. All right, we'll work on that.
Courtesy of Craig Scott.
I don't want to debate it tonight, I'm not going to debate it. Thank you very much for your input.
Thank you, Your Honor.
Martin Wilkinson?
Hello, Mr. Mayor and Council. I'd like to thank you again for the hard work you're doing for everybody in the city and the county. Again, I'm Martin Wilkinson, I'm a simple guitar player, I play the guitar, I play tunes. And I'm glad they're going to widen the sidewalk. That works great for a street musician, you know, the idea that it's going to be six feet wide, I like the sound of that. And basically, my position on the whole issue is that it should be less restrictive. I support Mr. White, especially the issue of when police officers are, how invasive are they going to be? How clear-cut are the rules? So, it's simple for them, it's simple for the artists. I don't mind a police presence, you know, I don't want gang rule or anything like that, but I personally don't want to have a lot of invasive police questions and, you know, behavior and everything like that. And so, my feeling is that would, that pretty much would suppress the whole sort of movement of street artists in the city, and the idea of economic development being generated by artists, and in particular, street artists at a grassroots level, people that don't have fine arts degrees, they're not professionals, they don't have certificates, they're going to be as confused by these, this spaghetti of codes and definitions. If they can, as clear-cut as possible, you know, in art, there's this big question of what is art, in art? And so, we're trying to make these judgments in the courts for, to make simple rules to assess what art is. And that's where, like, when I look at the rules from both sides, they seem to be, sort of exclude people or include things that I may not approve of, but that's the same situation, you know, that may be art, you know. I think everybody's looking at Jackson Pollock. You may have heard of Marcel Duchamp and his artistic statements where he bought items out of a hardware store, mounted them, and says, this is art because I say it is, I'm the artist. And, you know, he like mounted commodes and plungers and things like that. And it made people, you know, it really made him mad and stuff, but there's a context for this. And I don't have enough time to really go into it, but it's very interesting.
Thank you.
And so, in any case, support the arts, and I hope these two can come together and come with this perfect solution, but I doubt that, but hopefully get it clear-cut enough.
Thank you very much. Thank you very much. You want to keep talking, stay at the mic. You've got 30 seconds, you're over with.
It's just that.
That's enough.
It's just that.
All right, council, how would you all like to do this? You want to postpone these? You want to make a motion? We're going to do each one of them. I want one.
Mr. Mayor, I actually have a question before, you know, action potentially is taken.
That's what I'm looking for.
In earlier public comment, we heard from several of the artists, and I would agree if it's accurate, that the proponents are also covered. Talk to me about that a little bit, staff. What were they referring to, and is that an accurate representation, that the proponents of art, not the artists themselves, are also?
Julie Tyler, Deputy City Attorney. I think, excuse me, the idea was that it might not necessarily be just a creator there, but a proponent. The First Amendment, excuse me, protects the action of expression, and so, the proponent would be an individual who is making a statement, not necessarily giving out a merchandise that they created. An example in the proposed ordinance is a green piece, Save the Whale. And I believe the thought behind that is that the individual who creates the whale might not be the person who's speaking on behalf of saving the whale. I'm happy to take additional questions, or I can further clarify that, but the idea that the whale itself could be manufactured somewhere else. And so, that the person selling the ware would be the one speaking, you know, Save the Whales, that had the tagline on the whale.
So, it could have been printed somewhere else and brought there, and then they called it art and stuff like that. We're not going to debate it today, Mr. White.
No, I wouldn't debate.
So, would it also, I'm understanding you, it's making me nervous, but I am understanding you. So, would it prevent or accommodate someone to purchase a piece of a cloisonné keychain from China that they spent 29 cents for, and bring it over here and call it personal art, that they're a proponent for, and be selling that on the street, and describing it as art to be protected and discussed in public?
If there is a message that carries along with that keychain, then it could be deemed inextricably intertwined, so that the message and the art are together. Would depend on the message.
So, someone could be talking about underpaid labor and a 29-cent keychain manufactured in the bazillions in China, and be proposing a message and selling that in one of our public parks.
I believe that is possible. Case law right now, it's a complex area of law, and case law is changing. And so, the defining what is speech connected to a piece of art is often discussed on a case-by-case basis in the cases. The definition provided in the proposed ordinance is what is currently, current case law, with the idea that the area is very complex, and that examples are needed to flush out definitions that are in the ordinance. And the Ninth Circuit has determined that examples are very important when defining matters that would be protected under the First Amendment in this area.
And so, how do we educate and employ people who make that subjective opinion to enforce the ordinance?
Because the way it's currently being written, or currently proposed in front of city council, it is an, the exemption of a business license and a park permit are currently what's being proposed. That staff training would occur at a different level, but it is something that we're keeping in mind when we draft these, when we propose these ordinance for your consideration.
Thank you. Mr. Mayor, it does sound like we need, obviously, still more work, which is just so disappointing, because we have been working on this for months and months, but it sounds like we still have some issues. I would absolutely put a punctuation point behind the statement that it needs to be polite and courteous. Maybe the meeting that was held with some of our council members was, the emails we get are entirely offensive, and I would agree, bullying.
You can say one thing. Come on up, Mr. White, I'm going to give you about a half a second.
Don't blow it.
Don't oversell.
No, I just wanted to point out, you know, what the attorney is mixing up here, is there's two separate standards here, particularized message standard, and then artistic self-expression. And that's what White versus Sparks' ruling was about. City of Sparks was trying to apply the particularized message standard to me, the artist. And in that case, I would have had to convey a particular political, philosophical, ideological, religious message through my paintings in order to gain First Amendment protection. The Ninth Circuit separated artists away from the Gaudí ruling, the particularized message ruling, by stating that an artist does not have to convey any particular message. All an artist has to do is engage in self-expression through one of the forms of fine art listed by the Ninth Circuit. Now, the trouble is with the business license ruling, when they add in that proponent, it says, I forget what the actual language was, but it says, oh, by its creator or proponent. Well, when you say by creator, you're including artist in that, and you're saying that a proponent, an agent of the artist can sell. That's not true. A proponent of a particular message could sell, you see, under the Gaudí standards, but that standard doesn't apply to artists. An artist is automatically protected by mere fact that it's self-expression. And that comes about as a result of the Supreme Court upholding that the paintings of Jackson Pollock, the abstract paintings, they're just dribbled, a paint on a canvas, are unquestionably entitled to the full protection of the First Amendment. You see, the Supreme Court has held that a work of art is specifically created by an artist can convey some message, and that's why an artist gains full protection by the First Amendment. And this is why, in my code revisions, I've broken these down into separate categories, artistic self-expression, particularized message speech, and commercial speech. So, you understand.
Okay. That's where we can all move forward in a meeting. Thank you.
Again, for the record, Michael Chomp, Business License Division. This is a first reading, so we can, if this is a hang-up on moving forward or not moving forward, if this is referred for the second reading between now and the second reading, we could maybe examine this particular piece a little bit closer.
I think if we move, if we do move forward on these, before we have the second reading, y'all could meet and come back with suggested changes. Or do you want to just scrap them all until we come back later? You've got to have somewhere to start.
I do find his statement about that proponent an ambiguity, and so, I lean towards seeing a flaw at first blush, you know. And so, I am inclined to not support adopting the first reading. I think we should send them back, as Councilmember Jordan said, with some very clear ground rules that I think have been expressed. I would say little baby steps, because when I hear the busker talking in about, you know, playing on the sidewalk, that's kind of a different thing. But, I mean, even if we come back and get, you know, a few definitions dropped in in the exemption for the license, that's a big win to begin with. And I know, I know your patience is, you know, let's get down.
I'm not worried about my patience.
No, I mean, I'm, really, I'm feeling like, wow, we've dealt, put a lot of time into this, but it may be best.
I've been here 12 years, I wouldn't worry about my patience, this is like.
I know, no, but on just a baby step could be a big win.
But I think if you, my thoughts, if you went ahead and adopted this, then you could make the corrections of these come in time for second reading. You've got to give them some guidelines to start with, and you're not giving them anything.
Well.
You're not giving them a thing.
Your Honor, and I, real quick, just to be clear, what this does is it creates the exemption. That's what it does. Right now, we don't have this exemption. That's why what this, that's why this is important to be, get passed today. It can be cleaned up later if there's a problem with it, but the cleanup later is going to be better than leaving what we currently have in place for a longer period of time. So, that would be the request, if we could.
Which one's the exemption?
The exemption is all, I mean, essentially, it's.
It's bundled.
It starts in that 5.14, right? So, this is, 5.14 talks about, and provides all the language, in the language that Mr. White's referring to, and all the case law in the Ninth Circuit, about expressive merchandise, items of artistic self-expression, items expressing a particularized message, items inextricably entwined with a particularized message. That is all Ninth Circuit dicta, I mean, or holdings, so we have to comply with that. So, what this, what this code does is it recognizes that, and you can see that on the following page on the I-3. It talks about each of those different categories. And then, to implement it in the business license, we put it in Business License Chapter 4, essentially incorporating those exemptions that are set forth in this 5.14. And then, the same thing in the park ordinance, so that we adopted those definitions. So, currently, you need to get a business license to do these activities. If you adopt this code, you don't. Currently, you need to get a park permit to do these activities. If you adopt this code, you don't. And I think everybody, and I submit, everybody is in agreement that that's where we're trying to get to. We're not trying to create more obstacles for the artist, but currently, we do have this issue of you're required to get a permit, and you're required to get a business license, and this takes care of that.
What are the wishes of the council?
I have a question, Mr. Mayor, and maybe legal can talk to this. How does the issue at the Supreme Court right now relative to the?
The dancers?
The dancers, I was, thank you. How does that play into this, or does it?
Yeah, that's another issue about, you know, whether or not we can tax these types of activities. That's essentially what that case is about. Again, because what we do here today says, we're going to take that all off the table and exempt it, so that right now, our code says it's taxable. So, potentially, if that thing comes back and it says you can't tax it, our code has yet again got a problem and an infirmity with it. So, this says, we're not even going to go there, and if it comes back, then it'll be the council's decision at a later date, whether or not, if they say taxing it is okay under these circumstances, you could implement a tax on it, if you so desired, not that you would have to. But the exemption, again, takes it so that we can't be challenged on the fact that our code says it can currently be taxed. Does that make sense?
How about I.1.2?
I.1.2.
Okay, that's the exemption. How about if we just adopted that today, did not include the proponent word, take the second reading out, and you come back and work with Mr. White on the other two? second reading out, and you come back and work with Mr. White on the other two?
The problem there is that because it's all hinging on that RMC 5.14010, those are all the definitions, and if we don't have those definitions, we don't, we have a vague and ambiguous ordinance, because you wouldn't know if you would be able to comply with it.
But when we do the adoption on this, you bring through the introduction with the other, okay?
Well, that's what's currently, it would be the same thing that you're seeing today in the 5.14. Those are the definitions that have been worked on by staff. So we need those to say what's exempted.
But those are what Mr. White still wants to work on.
And we can work, and I guess the offer from staff is we can work on those, but if we adopt those today, we're heads and shoulders further along than where we are with our current code, because our current code says we can tax.
If we adopt them today, we can correct them before the next meeting.
Yeah, and that's, I mean, the adjustments, we can come back in the proponents' language, we can look at that. I mean, I think there are gonna be a number of workshops, I don't, I have no doubt about that. It's just that this really fixes a current problem that we have, and I'm sensitive to the fact that it's not a be-all, end-all. That is true.
Then why don't we just do a moratorium on the whole thing and put it out there that way?
Because it, well, at the end of the day...
You still got your old ordinance that you gotta live by.
Yeah, but you're suspending it.
What would the moratorium do?
It would suspend the administrative activity of the licensing.
Well, that would, again, pose even more problems potentially to, you know, law enforcement in terms of, now potentially, the unintended consequences. No, if it even smells like a First Amendment activity, we can't touch it, you know. And that, so, this at least gives some definition. Now, is it a great definition? I mean, Mr. White may be right on that it needs to be tweaked and it needs to be fixed, but it, again, the pitch is, it's much better than what we currently have.
Okay, well, you know, the city attorney's office has been working on this for a long time. They are making a very plaintiff request that we introduce this. I think, you know, let's, let's do what they say, and if it can't be worked out for the adoption, we're gonna say, come on, guys.
When it comes back to us, we can...
Well, I mean, it's...
When it comes back, we can throw it out, or what to do it or won't do.
That's true.
Yeah, just to be clear, we're talking about, just the exemption piece today and at the next reading. Then we're talking about all the other issues that Mr. White has and the artists have relative to special events. I mean, those are the ones that are gonna be probably more difficult in terms of trying to get agreement, you know. But this, this shouldn't be, this should be the easy one, because this basically says Mr. White and artists can do what they want to do, and they're not going, and they're gonna be exempted from our code.
But, you know, so you're gonna work it out with him for the adoption, and if the changes aren't substantial, we could adopt at that time. But, I mean, I already see a flaw. That proponent one does strike me as problematic, so I don't know, let's...
Yeah, potentially, that whole, you know, by its creator or proponent could be stricken in my mind. And, you know, I'm willing to go look at that, because the key is the expressive activity, as long as the expressive activity is exempted.
Okay, okay.
Whatever we do today, after their meetings, we can correct as we go down. This at least starts off with some guidelines, and we go from there.
Mr. White, what's your concern?
You keep shaking your head. Come on up, Mr. White.
Yes, I need to hear your concerns.
I do, too.
We gotta get through this.
My concerns are folks that, okay, you know, for 11 years, you haven't done anything. You know, we haven't had any code in place. The bottom line is, if you pass these codes, these codes, as they are written right now, are unconstitutional on a whole lot of levels.
That's your opinion. Thank you.
They are.
That's your opinion, and I'd like your opinion?
And I've given you all the critique, explaining what backs up my opinion.
But the thing, no, stay there a minute. Your opinion, I respect, but we're gonna sit down, we're gonna pass the, I recommend we pass them all, and I recommend that you meet with the people and let's make the corrections that we need to do. It gives us some guidelines to start from.
I wish, actually, and I'm the one proponent, you know, I realize we've moved a long way, no business license requirement, but I want you to have a good code. I don't want you to...
Well, I want a good code, too. That's why you're gonna get corrected. That's why we've asked staff to sit with you and try to correct.
I wish we could do that and come back in two weeks and then present you a better code.
Well, why can't you take the code we're gonna pass and make your suggested changes and then do it?
I think you're better off to make the changes first.
Let me have a meeting, 'cause we've never ever met before.
I disagree.
Your attorney already admitted I was right upon, you know, I might be right on one point. I think if we have a meeting, we can really work out some, some issues and present you with a much better code revision, and also...
Then you'll come back two weeks from now and wanna change something else.
No.
This right now gives you some guidelines to change.
But also, the special events code, I do think it should be held separate from these other three codes, okay? But I'd rather see y'all wait for two weeks and then have a code that's more balanced between the bunch of us.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Mr. George.
Can I try something and see if that...
Yeah, I'm gonna go with you, Mr. George, yeah.
Move to refer item I-1.2.
What about I-1.2? Refer I-1.2. Can I have a second?
Yes.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those that oppose, no. Motion carries unanimously.
Move to refer item I-1.3.
I-1.3, okay. Have a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those that oppose, no. Motion carries unanimously.
Move to refer item I-1.4.
I have a second? Give me a second?
Second?
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those that oppose, no.
No.
Show the vote.
Okay, so I wanna go back, I oppose all three, just so that's on the record.
Oh, you're gonna, you wanna revert, she wants to revote and show that she opposes all three of them. All right, what about I-1.1?
Do we need a, I don't think we need a...
Yes, we need a motion on I-1.1.
That's just the staff report, Mr. Mayor. I don't think we need a motion, do we?
No, we don't. We don't need a motion on staff report.
Tracy J., Reno City Attorney's Office. Now, the staff report is a lead-in to all the ordinance referrals. And just so council knows, you can have a 45-day adoption period between a first reading and a second reading. But what's important is it puts the public on notice that you are changing your code, so...
That's right. Okay. Now we'll go to item J., standard Department Adams Public Works. Item J.1. Before you start, let me, well, we'll go ahead and have your report, and then I'll call on the people who want to speak.
Good afternoon, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. My name's Teri Svetich, engineering manager with City of Reno Public Works, and I'm here today because we have had a bid protest on the Tom Wharf, or the Truckee Meadows Water Reclamation Facility, Septage Receiving Facility. On December 12th, we opened eight bids, and the lowest bid was submitted by Janay Gassio, and we refer to it as GGI. The second lowest bid was submitted by Spanish Springs Construction, or SSC. SSC filed a protest claiming that GGI's bid was non-responsive. So we'll go through this a little bit, just to cover the points. The first argument was that Janay Gassio did not complete all the required information on the 5% and 1% lists. City of Reno staff in Public Works, in conjunction with the city attorney's office, has looked at this very closely, and our response is that the NRS 338141 provides that the prime contractor list each first tier, list each first-tier subcontractor who will be paid an amount exceeding 5% and 1%, or $50,000, whichever is greater. The lists are to have the name of the subcontractor, their license number, and a description of the labor or portion of the work that the subcontractors will be performing. The subcontractor's lists provided by Janay Gassio contain the required information. Further, Nevada revised statutes with regard to the prime contractor provides that, one, the prime must include his name on the list, and, two, if the prime is to perform work that is more than 1% of the total bid and which is not being performed by a subcontractor, the prime also must include a description of the labor or work he will perform, or a statement that he will perform all work other than the work being performed by the subcontractor listed. Janay Gassio's lists comply with Nevada revised statutes. Spanish Springs Construction argument, second argument basically is that the contractor did not include the cost of materials on the 5% and 1% list. The Nevada revised statute uses the term "provide labor" or "a portion of the work" as to the prime contractor listing. There is no requirement to the listing of materials below the listing threshold. The third argument being that the percentage listed to be performed by the contractor does not add up to 50%. The intention of the 5% and the 1% list is not to demonstrate the total work to be performed by the contractor, but to identify subcontractors who are able, who are to perform the work in excess of 5% and 1%. The purpose of NRS 338.141 is to prevent bid shopping and improper substitution of subcontractor by a prime contractor after the bids are submitted. Despite the contentions by Spanish Springs Construction, Janay Gassio has not substituted or added a subcontractor. GGI has not revised their list or bid documents. Further, the prime contractor has completed the 1% and the 5% lists as required by NRS and signed the certification that any work in excess of the 1% other than work being performed by a listed subcontractor will be self-performed. Finally, the last argument being that the contractor did not repeat the information provided in the 5% list on the 1% list. Information listed on the 5% list is not required by NRS to be repeated to, on the 1% list, nor does the city require it. So in closing, the City of Reno Public Works staff, in conjunction with our city attorneys, have concluded that Janay Gassio is the lowest responsible bidder and has complied with all the requirements of the NRS and the city's specifications.
Thank you. Any questions of staff right now? Okay, Mr. Michael Kimmel. Kimmel.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. For the record, my name is Michael Kimmel. I'm an attorney with Hoy, Chris Aaron Kimmel. I'm here on behalf of Spanish Springs Construction. Spanish Springs will be speaking as well. If I could, I'd like to use the overhead. Thank you very much.
Sure.
I sent a letter to the city council and to the mayor. I know that that's been reviewed by everyone. I'm not gonna go through that whole letter here, so don't worry. I'd like to focus in on a few very specific legal issues. The first one is the 5% and 1% listing documents that were actually part of the city's bid package. I'm not talking about the statute requirements, I'm talking about the bid package itself by the city. The second will be a little more legal, it's NRS 338141. Now, bid documents always include things in addition to what the statutory requirements are. Bid documents require you to sign in various places. They require you to put in specific material amounts. It varies from project to project. So there's a hierarchy there. There's statutory requirements, and then for each individual project, there's specific bid requirements, and those must be complied with. If we take a look at the bid package in this case, we see that the city required that the percent of the total contract was input by the bidding contractor. Now, these are very specific words. Contract, contract is a defined word under our bidding statutes. Contract is defined as the entirety of the bid. It includes expressly materials, labor, equipment. It includes everything. This was a city requirement in this bid package. The contractor, if it was performing more than 5% of the work, as it must, because of the orange book, which I'll talk about later, it had to put in the total percentage of the contract that it was performing. It couldn't excise out materials and say that somebody else was doing those. That is...
Equally true.
For the subcontractor list, the part where you actually put in the subcontractor's amounts, again, it's percent of total contract. It's so there can be a comparison, an apples-to-apples comparison, not an apple-to-oranges comparison, where we use one way of calculating percentage for the subcontractor and a completely different way for the contractor. Now, if the city wanted to use a different methodology for its bid package, it could have. And in fact, the city has. This year, the city has changed the way that it's putting out the bids. Here's the Whittaker Park restroom demolition. The council can see that this is essentially the same requirement for the contractor until you get down to the part where the contractor has to state how much, what work they're doing. In this new bid for this different project this year, there's no requirement that the contractor lists the actual percentage of the total contract that they're doing. City changed. The same thing was done for the 2014 sewer rehabilitation project. Same type of changed form. In this form, contractor no longer has to put the total percentage of the contract as a whole that they're performing. They just state the nature of the work that they will be performing. So if we go back and we look at the bid documents we do have for this project, again, percent of total contract, we've got an amount there. That amount doesn't meet orange book requirements. The orange book, which was incorporated into this project, mandates that the contractor must not sub out more than 50% of the work. So one of the ways that you determine that, one of the ways that the city determines who's gonna be performing the work and whether the orange book has been complied with, is looking to see what the total amount of the contract is that the contractor's gonna perform. Now, staff has referenced, there's a provision in the statute that says, well, you can make an election. You can list the total amount that you're gonna perform, or you can certify that you'll perform everything not listed. Makes sense. By default, if you're performing everything that's not listed, then there's nothing for the city to worry about. The city knows that all other work is being performed by the contractor. And the staff has represented that GGI made that election, that GGI certified that any work in excess of 1% other than the work being performed by a listed subcontractor will be self-performed by the contractor. Here's the problem. GGI itself has told the city that that's not true, that its certification was not true. This is a January 13th, 2014 letter to the city. If I could focus your attention on the highlighted part, which is the last sentence of paragraph one. Again, this is from GGI, and it reads as follows: "There were, in fact, subcontractor bids for portions of the work that were below 50,000 threshold, and those were not listed, nor were they required to be." So we've got a statement from GGI saying, guess what? We have other people out there we didn't tell you about. But then we've got a certification in the bid document saying, we're doing all the work that wasn't listed. Both can't be true. It's impossible. Now, percent of total contract isn't complex. My client complied with that. They put a percentage of the total contract that they were gonna perform. KG Walters complied with it. They put a percentage of the total contract that they were gonna perform. Resource Development Company complied with it. They put a percentage of the total contract that they were gonna perform. It wasn't that difficult, and it was a requirement. Maybe it's a requirement above and beyond what the statute requires, but it was a requirement in the bidding documents nonetheless. Because of the admission, because... Because of the admission, because the city council knows that there are other less-than-one percenters out there that are being used, the certification cannot be deemed valid. And if the certification is not deemed valid, that bid by Janay Gassio cannot be considered to be a responsive bid. It must be rejected. It did not include all of the information that was required by the bidding documents, and the certification that it did include, by its own letter, it admits was false. Staff report contends that there's not really a requirement that materials be listed. I've talked about that a little bit, and I won't go through it again. Simply, the definition of contract is clear under the statute. It's all-encompassing. You can't be comparing two different things. One of the things that really separates city bidding from state bidding is the orange book requirement. It's a requirement that has been adopted through city ordinance. It actually originated as a county requirement, and that's the requirement that you can't use more than 50% in subcontract work, or subcontracted out portions of the work. This is what I would like to leave the city council with. This is a reflection of the bid that you have in front of you from Janay Gassio. The bid itself says that 43.2% of the work will be performed by subcontractors. The bid itself says that GGI will be performing 31.7% of the work on this project. That means that 25.1% of this contract is unknown. You have no way of determining whether Janay Gassio is performing the work, whether some other subcontractors performing the work, or who's performing it. And that is of the utmost importance for you to determine whether the bid is responsive. It is the only way for you to determine whether there's been compliance with the orange book. In many cases, it might be perfectly fine for the contractor to say, well, the reason we, the reason we know that 25% is mine is because I've certified that I will be performing all work not listed. But remember, that certification is invalid here because you've got a letter from Janay Gassio saying that there are other subcontractors. Right now, this is what you have. It's not responsive. And for that, on behalf of my client, we respectfully request that the protest be upheld, that the award be given to Spanish Springs Construction and not Janay Gassio. Thank you.
Thank you. Evan Rutherford.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, city council members. For the record, I'm Adam Rutherford. I am the president of Spanish Springs Construction. We've been in business since 2004, and since 2008, we've done over $85 million worth of projects with 30 million, over 30 million, being public work in Reno and Sparks. We've built projects as far away as Cape Cod, Massachusetts, and Chattanooga, Tennessee. Before starting Spanish Springs Construction, I also worked for Granite Construction as a senior estimator and Sierra Nevada Construction as a chief estimator. In my almost 20 years' experience of public work bidding, bidding at least a quarter billion dollars' worth of work, I have never filed a formal protest before. Public bid documents are supposed to be followed completely. When they are not, the bids should be deemed non-responsive. We have lost projects and received projects in the Reno-Sparks area for much smaller errors in bid documents in our bids or others' bids in the past. The idea that a contractor can break up their scope of work or a subcontractor's scope of work into multiple unlistable scopes of work is not what the NRS reads, nor does your list, nor has it ever been interpreted by any other agency that we've bid to in The letter from Janay Gassio dated the 13th of January said that they only listed their scopes of work in which their labor exceeded 1%. That's not what the NRS reads. The NRS reads that if you are doing any bit more than 1% or 5% depending on the list, then you list all your scopes of work under it. You don't break it apart into multiple scopes of work and miniature projects where you don't have to list. If this was true, then we could take our subcontractor's lists and break them apart and say, you know, that I could break their contract into multiple scopes of materials and labor and do, and say curb and gutter sidewalk or different parts of an electrical project, and say that I don't have to list that person because their portion of labor or their portion of work in each individual component that I put it in would not equal the listing thresholds. And that's not the case. This would lead to, you know, potential of substantial bid shopping in the future, and that's why the NRS is there. Your list, the City of Reno list, required everybody to list themselves or subcontractors to meet the thresholds of the total contract and the scope of work that was to be awarded. At least 17% of Janay Gassio's, from the time they turned in their 1% list at the two-hour mark to the time they wrote an email to the City of Reno stating that they were going to do over 50% of the work, is unknown. It proves that their bid's incomplete and should be deemed non-responsive. And I appreciate your consideration in the matter, and hopefully you'll uphold our protest. Thank you.
Mr. Mayor. Go ahead.
What?
I was just curious if Janay Gassio had any comments, but I guess not.
There's no other comment card filled out.
And there's no representative from Janay Gassio here? Oh, there's. May I ask a couple of questions?
Yes, you can ask some questions, sir. Would you come up, please?
Good afternoon. For the record, I'm Michael Scott. I work with Janay Gassio.
Hi, Michael. A question for you. Have you, with the City of Reno, submitted a bid in the past?
Yes, when I was with Clark and Sullivan, we built Ballroom and a few other projects around.
So that's a, how old is that? Five years ago? Six years ago?
Yeah. And Janay Gassio's been in business here for about 30 years. I've been in the business for over 30 years, all through the Southwest. This is not our first job.
Okay. I'm just trying to get to if there was just confusion with the form.
No. No confusion.
Thank you. That's all the questions.
I've got questions for staff, Mr. Mayor. Just a quick question.
I guess it looks like the process of how we bid is not clear or maybe somewhat confusing. Maybe staff could come up and tell us a little bit about maybe how it looks like we need to look at that process?
With regard to the process of bidding, the staff, in conjunction with city attorney's office, develop the specifications, and those are advertised for the contracting community. And there is a deadline in which they need to prepare the bid in accordance with the specifications. And those specifications include details about the work that they're going to be doing as well as contract details and the required elements of the Nevada revised statute. So when the deadline, that the bid must be submitted, the contractor brings those documents to the clerk's office, and then following that, everyone, all the contractors and the staff, city staff, open the bid documents at the same time and go through each one of those bid documents. And it's at that point in time that it is concluded what the apparent low bidder is. We don't necessarily know that everything is satisfied at that point. You do need to go through and look for each of the documents, the required documents, and make sure that it is submitted properly.
I guess I was trying to get at the, is there some confusion too on the percentages?
I think, did you want to address that, John?
For the record, John Flansburgh, Public Works. On the bid documents, the percentages aren't necessarily required on the big documents, that we have them in the big documents here. The, Janay Gassio has represented that they filled out those items that met the 5% list and the 1% list, that their subcontract lists are complete. And so I, we believe that that has been filled out correctly. The comment that Mr. Rutherford made in regards to breaking out subcontract so that they're less than, than the, either the 1% or 5% lists, could not be done because it's very specific in the code that it says the amount that will be paid to a subcontractor. So you have it very easily there. You know what you're going to pay the subcontractor. You have the list of scope that you have put into your bid, and that's very easy to determine. The list that you have for the general contractor, under their scope, Janay Gassio has said that they listed those items of work that were greater than 5% or 1%, and that those lists and what was supposed to be included on the lists were included. Yes, they have listed, also said that they have subcontractors that are performing some work, but it was not required to be listed. It was below the 1% threshold.
How do we, how do you deal with those issues, though, John, in that he certified that he was doing all of the other work associated with the project?
Associated with, with the listing requirements of the 1% and 5%. Otherwise, you'd be listing potential for, let's say you had saw-cutting requirement or something, and you were going to bring somebody to do saw-cutting, you know, some minor items of work. They listed all the subcontractors required that were below, you know, that were 50,000 or more, the 1% list, in this case 50,000.
But don't they say that they would perform all of the other work?
All their work required, that was on the 1% list, they represented they would perform all the other work, not, not required to be listed.
Okay, because that's not what was presented to us, obviously, by their attorney. So I might, I might go back to him real quick, just, just to get your response to that. Sorry if I catch you off-guard there.
For the record, Michael Kimmel, again, I think there's two important, important points here, Councilman George. So if we look, if we look at, let me make sure I'm looking at the right list. If we look at the 5% list, there's no, there's no either-or certification on it, okay? We talked about the statute having, you can list what work you're going to do, or you can certify that you're performing all work not listed on either the 5% or the 1% list. The bidding documents that went out for this project on the 5% list, it didn't have that certification. Bear with me. Let me grab the 1% list, because the 1% list is where the certification was, was input on the project. And we can see that.
And just, just so you're aware, when you're speaking, we do need you to speak into the mic, so it's recorded. Sorry.
Sorry about that. So the, the 3%, or I mean, I'm sorry, the 1% list. Okay. Here's the 5% list, and again, the 5% list in this case did not have a certification built into it, okay? There's, in that bolded part, it just says they, the contractor must be listed if they will perform any of the work in excess of 5%. Now, if we compare that to the 1% list, forgive me, I've got to pull that out of the staff. So if we compare that to the 1% list, the 1% list has the certification built into it. Built into it meaning the city pre-printed the certification on the document. The contractor didn't have the option to say, I'm going to perform XYZ work, or make the choice under the statute to certify that they will perform all work not listed. It was built into the form. And it says, I hereby certify that all work not listed to be provided by a subcontractor will be performed by the undersigned prime contractor. There's no qualification there. It's not all work that would otherwise have to be stated on a 5% or 1% list will be performed by the contractor. It's all work that is not presented on those lists will be performed by the contractor, and it's signed.
I have a question, Mr. Mayor. Staff, do you think that certification, even though it falls below the 1%, is also intended to apply to the 5% too? I mean, do you think that's? Is the certification for both lists?
For the record, Charla, honey, the certification is intended to, to apply to anything that the statute requires, which would be $50,000 or 1%, whichever is greater. So if it was...
But we do agree that's not what it says?
Correct. I would agree that that is not what that certification says.
So how is, how would anybody else to know that that's the intent?
I, I think that it would be implied because it is on the 1% list.
Let me, let me ask you this. This, these numbers at the bottom of this list, this 035-1?
Yes.
What does that refer to?
That's our bid documents. It's just a section and page number.
Is it within your design public works manual? Is that contained within?
No.
You don't keep these in your design public works manual?
No, no. These are just our standard bid documents.
When did you last update these standard bid documents? It looks like you've updated for bids going forward.
Correct.
Was that in response to this?
Yes, we did remove the percentages required in response to this because those percentages are not required to be listed on the 1% and 5% lists. The NRS does not request you to, or require you to list those percentages. We have them on there, and we've subsequently found that not to be necessary.
I mean, I've done project proposal evaluations, not for engineering, but I understand the need for forms. So you're comparing, as the attorney mentioned, apples and apples and not apples and oranges. So I understand that. I also see that the statute was updated in 2013 and 2011. Maybe some changes were material to what we're discussing. Maybe our bid documents just didn't keep up with the changes, or maybe we just haven't looked at them clearly in a while?
Susan Balroth, deputy city attorney. When the law is changed, we sit down and review the bid documents. So yes, they were changed pursuant to the recent legislative changes in 2013. As to ambiguity, we have had many bid projects bid under the documents as they existed in this bid document and did not have an issue.
That, you know, this is raised to light, you know, some changes, and we've changed going forward. I mean, that's our problem, right? It's not either of these companies that I think are working in good faith. My question, Mr. Flansburgh, is there were some emails afterward from a staff member saying, for some clarification, from the successful bidder, and I saw that, but I didn't see what the question was. And I asked you if you had looked at that email, and what was staff, was staff asking for clarification on something that, were they giving them a break on not having clarity on their bid documents? And that's what, that prompted that response?
No, I think that what prompted the response was actually questions regarding, from the other contractors regarding whether or not that was a complete, how things were filled out and trying to understand that. Going back to the question, I guess, that was asked in regards to, yeah, we have made a change since this bid because of the questions that have come up, taking the percentages off. And what we did that for was actually a clarification for the industry. It appears that in this argument, Spanish Springs is making that the, this, these ideas, these percentages, they're using that for the, an orange book standard of 50% of the work or more being performed. These forms were never intended to be used for that purpose. These were forms were strictly intended to be used to comply with the NRS so that they could show who their 5% and 1% bidders are and what work they're actually performing.
What about the, the comment that Mr. Kimmel, he highlighted in Janay Gassio's letter that, and he pointed out what to me seemed like a striking conflict, that in the letter of response that they wrote to us, they said they, I can't remember, they're doing... Because it looked like to me, and I can, you know, pull that section-
Well, we could, we could certainly ask the representative here to speak in regards to what the intention was. What we looked at that as, that there were other subcontractors that were performing work, but they were not required to be listed because they were below the, the $50,000 threshold.
But then they also certified that they were doing all the work in the bid documents?
On the 1 percent list, they certified that they are-
Doing all the work.
Performing the, the, all the work required to be, again, on the 1 percent list, we interpret that to be-
On the-
That was required to be listed on the 1 percent list, that any, anyone that was performing work was listed, but there would be some that fell below that threshold that would be doing it.
And so the question is, is that really the crux of the intent of the statute? And, you know, when I see his pie chart, seeing that 25 percent, y'all let slide essentially unknown, you know, I go back to intent, I don't know if that is intent. So I'm having, you know, this is a real hard one in an area. I don't have a lot of, you know, any, but, so it is a tough one for us.
I think it's a stretch that these forms are being used for a requirement of the orange book of the contractor performing 50 percent or more of the work. They're even used for that when in actuality, the intent was following the items of work the contractor was performing broken out, and the items of work that the subcontractors would be performing, and actually seeing that there are items that didn't meet the threshold for being noticed as they were broken out by the general contractor. However, in the discussion from Spanish Springs today, and talking about, well, you could just break out a subcontractor's bid the same way, you cannot, because the statute's very clear about the amount they will be paid. Perhaps there's some clarifying language in the NRS that could be stated about the amount that the contractor, the general contractor would be paid, or some, something that could be changed. For clarification going forward, we have taken the percentages off and put an affidavit into the bid documents that the contractor states that they are performing at least 50 percent of the work.
But the preponderance of respondents understood it, that you do have to break it all down, and they did that, right?
You know, that's, that's an interesting question. We had provided the, probably worked through a public records request, we provided to Spanish Springs, the, all of the bid tabs, if you will, that showed the percentage and how they were filled out, and they have represented to you four of those today. They didn't represent this one. If I can get the overhead. This was another bid that we received where on the 5 percent list. Now, of course, the contractor was not required to fill out the 1 percent list because they have time after the bid is for the top three, but in this one for work over 5 percent, they listed theirs as being 35 percent of the total contract.
Was that a responsive bid?
That was a responsive bid.
So you had two that went one way and four that went the other way?
Or six that went the other way. I think there were eight total.
Okay.
Any other que, I'd like to gavel about a 10-minute recess for a legal briefing and have us go to the council room chamber. We're going to be in recess for about 10 minutes. Item J1 and J11 and J12, Mr. George.
Yeah, Mr. Mayor. I mean, just based on what we were presented with today, I mean, I think there was confusion in the, in the bid documents for this project. And I don't necessarily know that it was the bidder's fault as much as it was probably our fault. So based on that, I'm actually going to move to deny the protest in J11.
Okay.
Second.
Have a motion, second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those that oppose, no.
And then, and then in J12, Mr. Mayor, because there was ambiguity in the bid process, I think it's in the public interest that, for the city of Reno, that, that we have a clear and unambiguous bid process, and I would move that we do not award the contract and that we rebid this project.
Have a motion and second. Any further discussion on that? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those that oppose, no. Motion carries unanimously. All right, now we'll go to item J2. City presentation discussion, recommendations, Mayor's Institute. Oh, there's Ms. McKissick. Hello, Ms. McKissick.
Yay! Yay! For the record, Maureen McKissick, City Manager's Office. Item J2 is the result of the Mayor's Institute of City Design. This was the Urban Design Symposium that Reno was invited to in November. In the interest of time, I'll make my comments very brief. Your staff report goes over the background and the recommendations. Staff is seeking direction today to incorporate those recommendations into the master planning, which is underway right now, and I will take any questions. Thank you.
Well, Mr. Mayor, if I may.
Yes?
I think this builds upon our earlier discussion with the RTC.
Mm-hmm.
You know, it's really kind of the middle part between what they're studying, and, you know, I, I think that being very precise with the Regional Transportation Commission about our priorities and in terms of transportation improvements, because this is the, the heart of this.
Mm-hmm.
I know NDOT's kind of in the mix here, is, is really key on our behalf. I have concern that, you know, while we can look at North Virginia and we can look at this different South Virginias, if we look at just Virginia through downtown-
Mm-hmm.
It's not necessarily as linear. Downtown's Virginia is a part of downtown, and I think maybe these design people would think of that. So it's tough. It's a tough one. I mean, I guess the, the highlight out of this was the stretch of Virginia Street from, say, like where the Walgreens is on up, right?
Actually, they concentrated most intensively on Ninth Street down to approximately First Street, and we walked that with Mr. Sherif. We walked it up and down that day, and so even though the scope was a little bit broader north and south, that was really the focus.
Yeah, and I mean, I just to add on and let the other council members know, I sat through the, we're going to have the expansion of the downtown police maintenance district come to us next meeting, and that was a working group that's worked for several months, and a number of folks, very vested in downtown, participated in. You know, the first three, four meetings, 75 percent of the issues were not related to the police maintenance district, but the other issues, you know, police presence and safety, you know, the, the big massive blocks of some of the properties with the loading docks that make it, you know, for pedestrian conflict, to, you know, stamped concrete looks dated, to the boarded up buildings, and, you know, is, is the package liquor, the pawn license, I mean, the host of downtown things. So it really, in my mind, still calls out for a downtown plan with an urban design component. And did they get into that at all and ask, what are plans?
Well, actually, you would have to ask the mayor. This was closed-door session, the mayor was your representatives in, in the meeting. We had prepared a video, and your staff report gives you the link to that, which we had done in advance to more or less showcase some of the issues that you're getting to, the scale, the impenetrability of the ground floor, the pedestrian experiences you walked. But I would resort to Mr. Mayor if he could-
No, we did, we got into all of that, from, say, the university down to about Fourth Street, looking at it, the, the garages, the solid walls, the boarded up. They sent back things after we discussed and left about turning the old motels into dorms or stuff like that. Really during the session, because I didn't have that, I had to bring that in from satellite to show them what we were looking at. But I know some of the clubs that have the boarded up, or the concrete walls, have indicated to me they might think about cutting a hole in and putting a store and doing some things and opening up like that. I'd never, we never discussed turning in the old motels into living quarters, but they did talk about having shops and things coming down. And the, the, I think all of the sidewalks, when we redid the, after the train trench, we got rid of those old pavers and stuff we had all the way up and went to stamped concrete and stuff. I think we went stamped concrete all the way up to-
It's actually part of our downtown design standard.
Yeah.
I believe that was put in place in 2005, so it's been there for quite a while. We're trying to pull up the video itself, which is about seven minutes long, so that we can show you what was presented. I don't know if we'll be successful.
When we went there, they had, y'all go ahead and start pulling. We had, every city had different slides and things they were showing, and we ended up showing a video, and every one of them said they wished they'd have done a video instead of a slide deal, even though the slides did give them a little more room for discussion because they could stop and talk about them individually, whereas with the video, you weren't, weren't able to. Go ahead, if you're ready to go, let her rip.
Reno is located in northern Nevada on the eastern slope of the Sierra Nevada Mountains. It's 218 miles east of San Francisco, 130 miles east of Sacramento, and 452 miles north of Las Vegas, a city we are sometimes confused with. We are on the eastern edge of the tech-focused economic mega-region which encompasses the Bay Area and parts of northern California. Reno's location is actually farther west than Los Angeles, which positions it as one of the best shipping hubs into the Pacific Rim. Reno has a Tier One university, the University of Nevada Reno, which is one of the oldest universities in the West. It began as one building on a hill overlooking the town and has grown to a large 290-acre campus, which is one of Reno's primary economic drivers. It has top-rated business and engineering colleges and a medical school. Its student population is steadily growing. This year, it has almost 19,000 undergraduates and another 2,000 graduate students. From 1885 until 1974, the university and the town were seamless. Then Interstate 80 was built. It is eight lanes wide and 20 feet below grade. From the day it opened, it created a grand canyon between the university and the town. The only remnant of the original connection is a one-block-wide blighted neighborhood on the north side of the interstate. Downtown Reno historically had brick buildings that were three to five stories tall, interspersed with a handful of taller, modern buildings. Downtown was also the base of our gaming industry. Starting in 1978, a building boom started. By the early 1990s, the downtown core had become much denser, comprised of numerous concrete towers and parking structures. Our streets became oriented exclusively around cars, not pedestrians. South of downtown, a number of cultural and economic centers arose, including a performing arts center, an art museum, and a children's discovery museum. The denser high-rise scale stops at the Truckee River. A riverwalk district which began around the year 2000 has become increasingly popular. It has a beautiful public park which hosts summer festivals and special events, a whitewater kayak course, and a variety of restaurants, theaters, art galleries, and bars. As you get closer to the Truckee River, you notice a change. There are shops, theaters, and restaurants. You are near apartment buildings. You walk past parks and some historic buildings. South of the river, the scale is closer to Reno's historic roots. A number of pre-war residential neighborhoods border the cultural centers and commercial areas around the midtown district. You come to an area where there are bustling businesses, sandwich shops, specialty shops, coffee shops, and small restaurants, and some interesting bars. Most of these businesses are in older buildings that have been readapted. At two to three stories, the built environment has a much smaller scale than downtown. There are residential neighborhoods mixed in with the commercial uses. The district feels walkable and open. It is much more livable. The city is interested in exploring if urban design can help us reconnect these areas. We want to reestablish the linkages between the university, downtown, and midtown. Let's look at this challenge from the street-level perspective. Virginia Street has been Reno's primary north-south arterial since the 1860s. Starting in 1932, it became the epicenter of Reno's gaming industry, our economic engine for most of the 20th century. Virginia Street was also the primary connection between the university and downtown. Virginia Street was vibrant. It had numerous stores and restaurants in addition to casinos and hotels. With angled-on-street parking, Virginia Street was also pedestrian-friendly. It was a fun location to stroll, shop, and take in the sights. The construction of Interstate 80 in 1974 and the rise of big-box construction in the downtown core throughout the 80s and early 90s changed the relationship of the university to downtown. It also changed the character of downtown. Not only did the scale become taller, more opaque, and more impersonal, most of the infrastructure was centered on cars, not people. This infrastructure has created physical barriers as well as visual ones. This would be the current experience of a pedestrian using Virginia Street to walk from the university to downtown. Leaving the campus, you walk along a three-foot-wide sidewalk to the first major intersection. There is a high volume of vehicle traffic. This is where three-lane of travel flow when exiting Interstate 80. After waiting for the signal, you walk to the next block where the sidewalk is a bit narrower. On the west side, Interstate 80 rushes beneath you. On the east side, there's a Walgreens parking lot. At the next intersection, you come to another light. This is the location where eastbound traffic exits Interstate 80. Crossing the street, you enter the northern edge of downtown. There's very little pedestrian traffic here. During the early 2000s, the city installed new sidewalks and new street lighting. Although the wider sidewalks look better, you are aware that there are no people watching you walk by. The buildings are multi-level parking garages or hotel casinos with false fronts. There are no homes or apartment buildings. Continuing south, you start walking into commercial areas that are busier. Pedestrian traffic increases. You walk past some older, shorter buildings which seem out of place, a few inactive motels, some old houses, but the majority of the buildings you pass are casinos, souvenir shops, and convenience stores. There are no restaurants, no clothing stores, no coffee shops. The challenge for Reno is how to connect the university, downtown, and midtown districts that occur along Virginia Street. Are there approaches that will be more successful than others? If we look to housing to help achieve this goal, where should housing be located, and what kind of housing should that be? How do we incorporate open space? How do we best use transit? If concrete, multi-story parking garages work against our goal of improving pedestrian accessibility, how do we rethink parking? What should the Reno of 2020 and 2030 look like?
So that was essentially the case statement that went before the Mayor's Institute. That was what framed the problem, and that was what we asked their input on. That was the backdrop to the five recommendations they made.
And what we did is when we had, the staff there pulled the Google map, and I was able to walk them down and show them the boarded up buildings and stuff like that, and those are things that, they said we have to have some substance, some businesses, some shops, some reasons for those 20,000 kids to want to walk down this way, and the different stores and things that we should have. And so those are things, and then they, that's where they came up with a little bit of maybe some of those old places being remodeled and made houses, housing out of them, but I really think that after, if they were to see them personally, they'd blow them up and start over again. But there are, there, there is an effort, or there is some feelings out there by a couple of individuals to put some shops up in there if we can ever get the property owners to get a little more realistic.
So this study has been shared with the RTC and with the university. They actually were instrumental in how it was framed, so we consulted with them as we developed it, because we saw this as an opportunity to wrap these findings into that planning effort. The timing of it was almost perfect, so we're seeking your direction on moving forward on that basis.
I would second that.
Okay, you second, okay.
But I, I wanted to add a comment.
Go ahead.
No one else had anything. Is, you know, I think that we need, on the South Virginia, to be very pointed about, you know, going from, to projects, and defining what projects are, and working it through that process, and prioritizing for ourselves. But also with the university, you know, this concept, Be a University Town, is out there. You know? And I want to know a little more about what their planning process is, because at the end of the day, I don't know, you know, how much it's, we've sold them the building, we've put banners up along the streets, we're putting a six million, you know, about $5 million of infrastructure to accommodate, you know, that's really key. But, you know, if they go through a true planning process, I'd like to see timelines, scope, what else? I mean, maybe, I mean, I've been planning with them for a long time. I know they moved over to Evans, they took over Monogue, I've seen all that. But I want to know, you know, an outline of what that planning process is. I've worked with it, but let us know what the planning process is.
They're in the middle right now. Dr. Johnson is meeting with business guys, with staff from the city and stuff like that, looking at stuff, along with RTC, about how to go in there and maybe do some of those roads, getting a little money to help take out some of those undesirable locations, and cleaning it up. They talked about, they, in the meetings that I've been in, they've talked about building an engineering building towards town. Maybe come across the freeway and build another part of the campus on this side. But it'll be right in that core of the freeway and stuff like that, if we can get stuff, to have one right there at the entrance, so it opens up the campus, so it really shows. But there's probably five, they've been meeting with about 10 people, and I just threw our city manager under the bus so that he would be there, and volunteered that he would love to participate and get involved with them. And then we will be getting council people involved with them too, as we go along there.
I guess the thing that I know how, when we started Midtown, it really was, it really relied on small businesses coming in there and taking the chance.
Right.
And so I think that we have some hurdles, because you have people that own these properties that won't let them go. You're going to have a really interesting situation there if they're not willing to do that, because I just know how this is with small businesses. A lot of them can't afford to go into business, so if we can somehow incentivize them, but first comes first, is you got to get to those landlords that are willing to do something. Otherwise, I'm not so sure it takes, it's sort of this process. But it really started with the landlords, is how we sort of worked through it, you know, one by one by one. They were willing to negotiate a little bit more to give a small business owner to take a little bit of a risk on them. I don't know how willing, you have to have two partnerships.
Well, and some of the properties owned up by the university, a lot of them are owned by one individual group of investors, and getting them involved and stuff, because the old motels, they've been studying those. We've been having legal search to see if we went in and tore them down and leveled them, can we lean the property? And, because we need to clear that up. That is a big eyesore. Not just going up the street and seeing the motels and stuff, but the boarded areas need, they need to level them, open them up, or do something. But we've got to clean that up, and I think that the process of working through that. And there's probably one developer in town that would be very interested in putting shop, building buildings, and putting shops and stuff. But as you said, you got to get the property owner to play ball, because they all want what they were getting 15 years ago, when the market was just running like a racehorse. But you got to get those guys to where they want to play ball, and you're right.
Right. And the other thing I wanted to just mention, we do have so many motels. I can't even get over the amount of motels. It's unbelievable.
Remember, this town used to depend on those babies.
Okay, okay, okay.
That was all we had. We didn't have a hotel.
If there's anyone out there that's listening that owns a motel, look at the Joy de Vivre properties. Have you seen those? They're incredible. They're the coolest motels you've seen. They still stay very relevant, they're very retro, and they really sort of bring it back to basics, but it's sort of updated, but it also, they keep, that's sort of nostalgic feeling in. I'm sure you've stayed in them, Maureen.
Well, and a lot of those places, why would you accuse her of that? But they do, they are, a lot of the motel owners are putting money back into them and reinvesting.
Right. But look at that, as a boutique motel option, they're also putting artists in these types of motels. I mean, these are things that can happen, but once you get the business owners in small business, because they're the ones that really bring in that grassroots, but everyone, so I mean, I think there's a lot of options, but at the same time, you have to start sort of one foot in front of the other.
But some of the stuff you have up around Fifth and stuff, where one end of a group of investors own five or six.
I know, well, that's the thing. They've got to come to the table.
They got to come to the table and play.
There may be policy approaches to do that.
Yes.
There you go.
Those could be an exploration for us, and it's not an infrastructure project. And I think maybe that's some discussions we should have.
And just to put some timeframes around it, the UNR City RTC Master Planning Process will likely be concluding at the end of this year. So we would really like your direction at this point, to begin incorporating some of these recommendations into that. There is a lot of opportunity.
Yeah. And Maureen, you kind of touched on, when we walked with the front person up the whole stretch from Regency of Midtown all the way up, the day before we actually were with him, he took a driving tour with the representative from the museum the day he flew in. And he said to us, having only taken half of the walk through Midtown here to City Hall, and then we were looking at maps with him, he really believed that our proposal should be the Fifth, Sixth Street area, from his day-before experience in looking at the map. And we said, but wait until we get you up to the university, wait till we get you to Elm and, and the Walgreens and that area up. And as soon as we approached it, he said, oh my gosh, you are right. You're absolutely right. This is where we need to begin. So he recognized it as well. We've got a lot of space that we need to do a lot with, but the transition that can happen, if we start there at the north end, at that major gateway, those other property owners will be more inclined to get involved, if they see us taking care of that ugly.
If you get to where you're, the freeway and above, take care of that, and RTC comes in, widens that, does a roundabout, and does some stuff in there, will change that whole atmosphere, then maybe it'll start sloshing over on this side of the freeway. But good job, and thank you.
I am seeking direction.
Motion. Well, I mean, the direction.
Got a motion and second? We told you what to do.
Thank you.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those that oppose, no. Motion carries unanimously. All right, where are we now? J3, allocate, well, we pulled that, didn't we? We pulled J3 and J3-2. Boards and commissions, Assessor Advisory Board, who's on that? Got any appointments?
Yep, move to appoint Joseph Rodriguez.
Okay, have a motion, second? Second, all in favor, say aye. Those that oppose, no. Motion carries unanimously. Historical resources?
Mercedes de la Garza.
Okay, have a motion, second? All in favor, say aye. Those that oppose, no. Motion carries. Urban Forestry Commission?
Yes, I'd like to appoint Ashley Turner, please. Turney, excuse me.
Have a motion, second? Have a second? Second?
Second.
Oh, thank you. All in favor, say aye. Those that oppose, no. Motion carries unanimously. Identification of future items?
Mr. Mayor, I have.
Yes.
I would like to put on a future agenda, initiating a zone change for Assessor Parcel Numbers 007-124-02 and 03, from multifamily 30 dwelling units per acre, MF30 to University of Nevada Regional Center.
Okay, any others?
Yes, Mr. Mayor.
Yes.
If I can have a report, at least, of the homeless shelter, the overflow. My understanding, talking to staff, is that the overflow shelter is going, is coming to an end for the contract in the end of March here, so I'd like to know if there's an opportunity to push that out, or what the, where we currently are with funding, so we don't have a homeless issue come the new season in downtown.
Okay.
Mr. Mayor.
Yes.
And then I would just like a quick update on ADP, how the process is going.
Which one?
Process of ADP.
Okay.
Mr. Mayor, I have two items. A constituent recently contacted me about a lot of abandoned vehicles up in Ward 1, in the north part of Ward 1, and about the same time, I'd noticed that, you know, when you get the Reno Direct complaints, abandoned vehicles are just always, there's a lot of abandoned vehicles. And what is that about? Who's abandoning these vehicles? Are there?
Somebody ran out of money.
Who are they? Where are they going? What happens to them? And I understand, I was talking to another staff member.
They don't run.
They're always, you know, it's always up there on the Reno Direct.
Okay.
I'm just wondering, and I don't want a whole lot of work from staff, but maybe any ideas?
Okay.
What's going on? And then my other one is, I have, poetry is just a very, you know, important form of human expression, and a lot of communities are adopting, kind of designating a person in the community to serve as their poet laureate for a year, and they don't pay them anything. They just, if you have an event, they pick out a poem and they read, and it's just a way to let people know that poetry is a, is a community, is a cultural resource and value. And so I would like, for next item, a discussion and possible direction to the Arts and Cultural Commission to consider the City of Reno having a poet laureate. And I have some backup literature about that I'll provide, too.
Laureate. How you like this one? This'll stir up everybody. I'd like to look into doing a little study about working with the city, with the people up in Collin Ranch, about annexing into the City of Reno. Yeah, that is cool.
Mr. Mayor, may I?
No, I just want us to look at it and see if there's an appetite, because I've had a few people tell me there was an appetite, so I thought, we couldn't do anything unless the homeowners wanted it, but I'd like for us to explore that.
Mr. Mayor, I guess as a follow-up to the, just an update on where we are with the Homeless Task Force? I am on it, and we were, we put in names of suggested participants in it, and I just haven't gotten any feedback on where that is, so.
Because you're our representative.
Correct. Yes. We have not met on it.
Oh, okay, okay. All right, any liaison reports?
Mr. Mayor, I do have one from, oh, I'm sorry, we'll go down the list. I just jumped right in there.
Well, you sure did, but I'm going to ask Ms. Brackus, do you have anything? Ms. Zadra? Mr. Delgado, just wait your turn. Mr. Delgado? Mr. Dorch? Ms. Jordan?
Mr. Mayor, just a quick update. The RTC has filed its response to the Army Corps' letter relative to the Southeast Connector, and all those documents can be found, and they are quite voluminous, at the RTC's website.
Okay, good. Ms. Jordan, oh, Ms. Sheevy, did you have one? Come on.
I remember you.
Yes, I do, too. You kept interrupting me.
I'm just going to give you a little update on the Technology and Innovation Council. It's been very exciting. Andrew, thank you for attending last time. What did you think?
It's great.
Yeah.
Very exciting.
So I just wanted to let everyone know, at our next meeting, we're going to be joining the generator, and I would encourage all of you guys to go. And one of the things that's come out of the Technology and Innovation Council is that Ken Crater got together with Eric Hatch, do you remember Eric Hatch? He came and showed us the trailhead. So they came together and formed a partnership from that, and so they're working on bringing that.
Super.
And, yeah, it's really exciting. And they're also working on some other exciting things, but I think you guys should definitely come to the generator with us and see what they're doing.
Any reports on conferences or professional meetings? You know, these liaison reports is where y'all can bring us up to date on what's happening at committees, at RTC, and different things, so that we're not broadsided sometimes.
Mr. Mayor, I'm sorry, can I? Can I just expand on one thing with regards to RTC?
Oh, I'd love for you to.
I know, because you, I know how you love meetings to go on and on.
Yes.
Not only is the very important thing relative to the Southeast Connector on the website, but Councilmember Zadra and I made sure that at the last meeting, that we emphasized the budget priorities from the city to the RTC, and how important it is that those things rise to the position in which they should be with regards to the budget.
Super. Okay, item L4. Ms. Zadra?
Mr. Mayor, and we need to have economic development and public outreach added to that, because we don't have funding for our replacements, for our NABS, and the experiences that we'll be doing with our community. I need to be able to pay for that out of this as well. So it should read Economic Development and Public Outreach, since we took our NABS stuff away.
Item L4?
Yes. So with that modification, move to approve?
Does the same dollar amount, or did you raise the dollar amount?
Same dollar. No. I'd love to rank.
Okay. Have a motion, have a second? Have a second? All in favor, say aye. Those that oppose, no. Motion carries. Item L5, Ms. Jordan?
Second.
Have a motion, second? All in favor, say aye. Those that oppose, no. Motion carries unanimously. Ms. Brackus? Have a motion, second?
Mr. Mayor, I have to read the resolution. Sorry for the interruption. Resolution number 7950, resolution donating council donation funds to the Truckee Meadows Parks Foundation to offer park-based educational and recreational programs in an amount of $2,000.
Okay. All right, item L7?
We need to vote on that.
Excuse me, we got to vote on that? And all in favor, say aye. Those that oppose, no. Motion carries unanimously. Now, on these next two items, we've sent memos out, staff has?
I have not seen a memo on the Virginia Street Bridge, and I don't want to, I mean, I assume it's a $20 million infrastructure project, $2 million of city street funds that staff's spending more than two hours on this, and the manager is, you know, one of our issues, you know, his responsibilities to us is communication. So would be looking for communication, particularly since we've had so many items related to this come forward with representations of when it would be going to bid, and timelines, and just don't want any more time, but just, you know, the communication for the timelines.
Okay. So if we can expedite them.
Mayor and council, just to let the council know, we did send out a memo this morning, actually, which is why you have not seen it.
All right, that's why we hadn't seen it.
Yeah. Okay. And on the next one?
On L8?
The memo did come, it explained the dispute procedure. I see on the three-month calendar, there'll be a presentation on the rollout is.
See how it's doing.
Coming. So that's satisfactory to me. I guess in terms of our responsive services value and engagement, is that dispute resolution process going to be explained on our website? You know, do you go through Reno Direct, and here's what you can expect in terms of feedback and all? And, you know, when the rollout comes, maybe we'll hear about that.
All right. Mr. Delgado, item L9?
This was a focus of our schools, and that reside in residential communities, neighborhoods. I think, Fred, did you have a staff for?
Do you have a short presentation, sir?
A very, very short, just clarification, that this is just for schools, if we could just put on the record that these are for public and private schools, or just public schools, residential adjacency? Or we could look at all residential adjacency for solar projects?
I was looking specifically at schools, public and private. I know, it'd open up a whole lot of other things, if we're looking at other things residential, but unless the council sees an opportunity outside of that.
Well, maybe a suggestion of churches also, or house of worship?
That's a good idea, yeah.
Okay.
If you can do that.
So that's your motion?
My motion.
Second.
I'll support, just, you know, mindful that we have, what, 26 other text amendments that we've initiated that are in the pipeline, too? Is that correct?
Yes, yes.
So this is, do you need prioritization from the council on which, you know, are you putting them in a chronological order as you and your staff work on these, or?
We do prioritize based on council direction and timeframes. Also, we are proposing some bigger changes on the overall code, which will be coming in a subsequent meeting.
Okay. Okay. Do you need, do you want to prioritize this within the other 26, or fast-track, or do we want to give direction on that?
If, I mean, be at the staff, I don't know if that's an opportunity to make that happen, or?
We could look at our overall schedule of, you know, we don't want to say once more has a higher priority than another, but we could take a look and, and come back with a realistic timeframe, and if that needs to be prioritized more than that, we can go through this process.
That's fine with me. That's fine, thanks.
That's good.
Okay. Should I add a motion, a second? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those that oppose, no. Item L10. Ms. Zadra?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I thought that we had done this, but if not, certainly we'll do it again, to create a moratorium for business licenses on pet stores, which specifically is for dogs, cats, rabbits, or gerbils and things like that included.
Yep.
That we not accept any new business licenses for that type of pet store retail operation until we have been able to complete our evaluation and corrections to how those businesses are operating in our community.
Could I ask for a clarification on that? You know how sometimes people buy chickens in the spring, and maybe rabbits, because then they raise them at home for, you know, for their own meat? A lot of people do that, you know?
It just depends. It's for dogs, cats, and rabbits, I believe.
Will they eat them, you know? I'd hate to see, I mean, people go down to the feed store, and they get layers, right? Or some people are raising rabbits, and they, they do, and so I'd hate to see us cross into this agriculture thing. I mean, it is home, it is an agriculture thing, and I.
Well, I mean, there's some of them out of these, these pet shops, and these pet shops right now are run with disease, and I'd hate to see anything coming out of that, and I know the Easter chickens, they go buy them down there, and then they raise them, and eat them in September, October, you know, but. Huh?
Yeah, the feeds, I don't want to see the feed, I would not be comfortable seeing the feed stores get captured.
No, this isn't feed stores.
Just a clarification, Fratton, here, Community Development Director, you're correct, this, this is about pet shops, retail. This is not feed stores and a feed lots, they typically, the chickens are coming out here any day now, for the feed lots.
Okay, so I have a motion, do I have a second? Have a second. All in favor, say aye. Those that oppose, no. Ms. Zadra, L11?
Relating to the same topic, that we need to take a look at the operations of those pet stores, and see how our ordinances and our inter-local agreement can be strengthened to, to correct some of the ugly procedures and operations that we're, we're seeing.
And I would like to see, excuse me, I didn't mean to stop, a list of where the animals come from, when they were vaccinated, they have to keep the records for a period of time. I want to see that all in ordinance, because right now, they keep no records, they throw everything away, and there's five or six, and I gave staff five or six items that I really wanted to see on that, and I can recreate it if we have to.
For the record, Joe Henry, acting Code Enforcement Manager. We received a copy of the Washoe County's changes to Chapter 55, and we're reviewing that now, and they have done a lot to address those issues, and we have some edits we'll be bringing back to them to also address all those issues.
Okay, well, I sent somebody a list of five or six things.
Yes, sir, I got that.
Of where the animal came from, when it was born, where it was, when it was vaccinated, the whole nine yards. He's got it, and he'll look at it.
Yes, sir.
Thank you very much.
Mr. Mayor, oh, I'm sorry, if I'm, so, just for clarification, they had the South Lake Tahoe ordinance attached, and that was a ban on these operations. We're not going there.
We're not there yet.
We're looking at operational characteristics.
That's right.
Okay, because I saw, the memo said, oh, let's let the county do that, or, I don't want to give up authority.
No, I don't either.
And, and we have had preliminary conversations with the county already, and they clearly recognize that this needs to be, and, and want it to be a mutual resolve.
So, it ends up being all the way across.
Yeah, and, and this, although the language isn't in there, the puppy mill restrictions are definitely implied, if we need to specifically identify that, which I just have, that is part of, of this activity as well, to restrict the, the puppy mills, because they're the ones who supply to these pet stores. So ultimately, we want to become a puppy mill-free community as well.
Mr. Mayor, if I may, for the record, Cadence Matievich, Assistant City Manager.
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you. I, I would like to clarify, as Mr. Henry said, the staff has been working quite closely with staff at Washoe County on a number of issues related to animal services, and I'll have some updates for you on your next two agenda items as well, but I believe that the council was provided with a memorandum that outlined some of the items in the 2003 interlocal that consolidated animal services, and with respect to authority, certainly, this body retains authority over business licensing, but the actual enforcement of animal care is, in fact, that authority resides with the county. We did give that up, and, and in that agreement said that we will not pass any ordinances, so it will be critically important that we work with them. They have given us that draft, we see that it, it addresses many of these issues that you have brought forward, and we will work to ensure that it encompasses all of those to your satisfaction.
Well, and they're, they're willing to look at, and we've met with them, adding five or six things there about where these animals come from, how they're being vaccinated and taken care of and all that.
Yes, indeed. And they have indicated to us that they are anticipating bringing forth those code changes for consideration by the Board of County Commissioners within the next month or so.
Okay, but we want them to see our suggestions also for those.
And, and we are in communication and forward those to them, and we'll make sure that they're incorporated when they're brought forward.
All right. Item L12, Ms. Zadra?
Again, similar, we do need to work with the county on this, since we do have our interlocal agreement with them, and specifically as it relates to the operations with the regional animal control services, and to ensure that the policies and procedures that they have do not inhibit, if anything, they need to work to improve the working relationship that they have with the Humane Society. When that bill was, or when the question was passed by the citizens of this community resoundingly, it was that there would be that relationship there, and they have an opportunity, the county currently has an opportunity to, they are in the middle of defining how they're going to manage that operation. It's going to be moved from within their operating areas, and we need to have some involvement in that, because we have an interlocal agreement with them, and particularly consideration of a third party that could operate those services over there.
Mr. Mayor, if I may, for the record, Cadence Matievich, Assistant City Manager, in response to your comments, Councilwoman Zadra, I believe that the manager sent a memorandum to the mayor and council on February 8th describing what was the original scope of a technical advisory committee that has been created at the direction of the Board of County Commissioners related to the management, if you will. The sheriff's office, as this council knows, has had oversight of animal services for the last few years, and has requested that that go back under either management as a, under one of the existing county departments, as a standalone department, and so the Board of County Commissioners gave direction to the manager to create a working group, which we are part of. I am serving as the designee to that, and have been in a couple of meetings so far. At their meeting yesterday, the Board of County Commissioners expanded the scope of that technical advisory committee to include an analysis of the operations, so not just where it would be managed, but actually an, an operational analysis that would look at things like you raised at the last meeting, the ability of nonprofit partners to obtain grants and those things. It's my understanding that the direction that they gave them yesterday did eliminate the, the option for a third party to, to do the entire operations, because of some concerns about the impact on the bond questions, the, the funds after that ballot question, that it was only a partial share. So, right now, they've taken that off the table for the immediate, and given direction to this committee perhaps to recommend an interim step, and then look at that further down the line, because my understanding that the request from the sheriff is to relocate the management by July 1, and, and to outsource it, if you will, by then would be difficult. So, it's my understanding that, that an option for it to be fully contracted has been taken off the table, but that perhaps a joint powers authority or something else could be considered.
We need to absolutely, staff needs to, to really be able to examine that. The initial concern that I heard from them for a third party was the management, and when we met with them, Hillary and I recently, it was suggested, we suggested that that could be resolved by having a very, a board very similar to, we have interlocal agreements for the health operations of our community, and there is a board that represents every elected body that manages it, same at RTC, same at Tamwa, the same kind of a board could be established for the, the Humane Society and Animal Services. So, if that's temporarily removed, I would hope that you will work with them for consideration, that there could be a way to get there. It may have been removed because it looked too complicated, but there could be a way to get there. I'm not commanding that that be the only thing we look at, but there could be a way.
And if I may clarify, Councilwoman Zadra, I don't believe that the option of a joint powers authority was taken off the table, but I believe the option of completely contracting it to a third-party private entity because of some of the concerns with the field operations and peace officer authorities, that those individuals would need to have to exercise citations and other things that would require potentially legislative changes, and so in order to accomplish that, that may be further down the road.
Understood.
And I would also add that we have, in those early meetings articulated to the group that, that whatever management model and operational model comes out of this, that our expectation is that the level of service would remain as is today, if not improve, including addressing the recommendations that came out of this council's Blue Ribbon Animal Task Force that made their recommendations in 2012.
Just really quickly, Cadence, thank you so much. I know you're working hard on this. Sharon's been working really hard, too, so this obviously is a very hot issue. I just want to be clear that even yesterday, I received another complaint on the pet stores and things like that, and I know it's a much bigger issue, but I, I do want you to know that it's, it's certainly something, we appreciate you doing all that. I mean, I read your reports, a lot of, lot of work.
Thank you, Councilwoman Sheevy, and we will continue to express upon them your concerns that these issues be addressed entirely and as quickly as possible.
Thanks.
Okay. Discussion about the audit, you've got an update for me on that, because we had requested this before the sheriff went in, and they did an internal, and they never shared the internal with us. I hear they're now doing an audit, so would you bring me up to date?
Be happy to, Mr. Mayor. You are correct, yesterday's Board of County Commissioners meeting, the board directed the county manager to conduct a financial audit of the animal services fund. I spoke with Mr. Slaughter last evening, and he has indicated to me that it is his intent to have an outside auditor complete that audit, and that he will be looking to go, whatever process he utilizes, he will undertake that very quickly, to have an outside financial audit. The audit that they did was actually an operational audit, it was not an internal fund audit, but, but this would be a financial fund audit that an, that an outside.
And I want to, you've got to go back in time, because you've got to go back at least a couple of years, because there was a reserve there that's gone, and I want to know what happened to that. Was it siphoned off to pay people's retirements because they did 5% of their work over there? I just would like to know what happened. Since we gave up part of our property tax, and so did the city of Sparks, I think we deserve an accounting of it, so as long as they're doing that, that's fine with me. But don't do it just for last year. It's got to go back two or three years.
Yeah, I believe, Mr. Mayor, that the, that if we, if we went back to the fiscal year ending 2011, that would capture the timeframe that you're talking about.
That would be more than enough, yes. I, this next item, L14, the reason I'm asking for a review of this and see where we are is because during the last session or something, people said they were going to give up stuff and do that, and this and that, and they didn't give up stuff, and I don't think it's fair for us to take a salary increase when everybody else is not getting salary increases, and if you do it automatic and you leave it up to people, some people didn't give up, and I would like to look at the structure and see where we are, and have you bring back information on that. That's a motion, do I have a second? All in favor, say aye.
I have a question. Is this going to be, I, I'd like this discussion to, this information to come back from the manager's office. I don't know that I'm looking for a recommendation from what to do from the manager's office, just for the facts, right?
This is just for the facts and stuff, and then, then as we get into budget hearings, we can decide what we want to do.
Mr. Mayor, so are you clarifying, are we talking about city council?
Yes.
Okay, I just want to make sure.
And judges and everybody.
Okay, okay, that's all I want to make sure, if it's just us, or?
Oh, no, it's everybody.
Okay, right.
And, Mr., this is relative to the auto increase that's with, not within our control, correct?
Right.
The percentage increase, okay, that we have to bring back every year, in addition to other things, if we so choose, but.
That is in our, that, my understanding is, that is in our control because it's a resolution, and resolutions are within our control. It's, it's setting it, and then those in office when you set, so maybe a spreadsheet office salary, how, how controlled or established, and how changed, or something along those lines, and, you know, I see a spreadsheet.
And then we can specifically?
Decide what we're going to do.
What, what it also goes to?
Yeah.
Okay, we can, okay, I just want to make sure.
Yeah, in that way, we'll be able to decide what we're doing. Okay, I asked for this other one, because we'd gotten a letter saying that, and I know they're having a meeting tomorrow or something, but I still would like to give the city manager authority to be prepared in case State of Nevada or somebody says that we can't hire, or our legal counsel can't give us advice on medical marijuana and stuff like this, that we could find attorneys in Colorado, Arizona, or somewhere else that could give us advice on those type of things.
Well, Mr. Mayor, let me ask you this, are you prepared to go ahead and, and take the six-sevenths vote to affirmatively do that, or do you want to wait? I mean?
No, I don't think, not tonight for the six-seven, but when it comes, yes, I'd need the six-seven, didn't I? Yeah.
So, we're ready to hire outside counsel?
If we have, that's right, if we have to.
If we have to?
Yes.
So, if somehow the bar says?
So, we probably, we probably don't necessarily need a six-sevenths vote tonight, because we don't know, you haven't brought back any possible candidates to hire?
No, but I mean, we wouldn't be hiring, but we would bring him back.
I'm, no, I'm just saying.
I think we would need it, though.
I think you need that authority to go out and, and get through four lawyers that could give us advice, and then decide which one.
I mean, because you have to assume you're going to make some calls and find out.
Yeah, if, if the, if the letter comes back tomorrow and, and states that a government attorney cannot assist on this for whatever reason, I think we would need the six-sevenths vote today to go out and hire some, otherwise, we'd have to bring it back, and there, and there are some timing issues with bringing it back.
So, you would be under, completely under your discretion as to who we hire, what the, what the financial implications are?
No.
That's what I'm saying. I mean, is that the authority, I'm just asking, is that the authority?
And that's up to council.
Yeah, I mean, let me just.
I was just going to say, from a timing standpoint, I mean, whatever authority you, if you give me more authority to go out and hire somebody, it just expedites the process, and I guess I would ask Assistant City Manager Cadence Matievich to maybe help with, with the timing on this.
Thank you for the record, Cadence Matievich, Assistant City Manager. Our, our time is running short. I think, as the council knows, we are due to come back to the council at your direction by the end of April with some recommendations. Our concern is that if we don't take action on this today, that potentially that action is delayed by, by another two weeks, and, and then you give that direction, and it's going to take us time to go out and solicit and determine what, what those potential costs would be. So, so perhaps as an option for you today would be to give authority to the, to the manager to, to make such a hire up to a certain dollar amount, be that the signatory threshold that you've given. If, if the amount were over $50,000, by statute, we are obligated to bring that contract back. $50,000, by statute, we are obligated to bring that contract back to you anyway. So you could set a lower threshold on this item today, if you wish.
That's all I was, I was just wondering how we, I mean, financial implications, you know, but I'm not thinking that it was going to be within your discretion.
But what I'm wondering, and, you know, backing up from there, is say the bar says, hey, every attorney in Nevada can go ahead and do this representation, do we still want to go ahead and hire outside counsel? Because I have felt that our, even before this issue of bar affiliation came up, our attorney was providing us some foot-dragging assistance, and so that's what I wanted, and that's where I thought you were going, but it sounds like you're not.
No, I think that we should be able to go out and hire attorney if we want to, and if we need to, we'll have, call a special meeting and give the-
Let's just do it, if we give the authority today, let's go.
Let's just, let's just take a motion, give me a six, six-sevenths vote.
No, and I guess my only comments to this is, I guess I feel kind of regardless what the bar association says, this is completely new, a new area for us, and to not seek an expert in this area may be doing a disservice.
That's right.
So I, I'm certainly in favor of up to the signing authority of the manager to-
Hiring an attorney out of Colorado or Arizona.
I want to also make a few additions to that thought, is, one, this is services money that we did not anticipate. The attorney's office has a services budget, and the money should come out of that services and supply budget. And then the second one-
They've got a budget for outside counsel, too.
Yeah, yeah. And then the second one is, I've noticed, you know, in these attorney, you know, when we've hired, there's outside counsel, you know, going back sometimes many years. Who's the manager of it? Is it the city, is there attorney's office, is it ours? We need to, I think, identify who it is and what our city attorney's role would be.
The city manager.
The city attorney manager and his designee would be the project manager of this contract.
Not the city attorney, it'd be the city manager.
I mean, the city manager, yeah.
City manager, and the city staff, the city attorney's staff could help whoever they hire from outside if we have to.
Yeah, Mr. Mayor, if I ca, if I may, the charter is actually specific on this issue, that the, that in an instance like this, where it is, where it is the council directly hiring, that the outside legal counsel does not, in fact, report to or interface, really, with the city attorney's office, that they report to you. And so, it would be our intent by this action, that by giving the authority to contract to the city manager, that we would also be designating that he would be the contract administrator.
Okay, okay, because that, I don't think that's been made clear in the past, and so the city attorney's office is not representing us. If they want to contact us or provide input on this, they go through the city manager. It's-
In cases where you take a six-seventh vote to hire outside special legal counsel, there are, there have been cases, and please jump in here, either of you, where the attorneys, I'm thinking of other, other places where we have outside legal counsel that works in conjunction with the city attorney's office. This is a different circumstance. This is special legal counsel under the provision of the charter that requires the six-seventh vote, and the charter specifies that, that counsel report, that legal counsel reports directly to the city council.
Correct.
Legal counsel.
And if you designate the city manager as the contract administrator, that is at your discretion.
Ms. Chase.
Thank you. Tracy Chase, Reno City Attorney's Office. Your charter indicates that if you vote by a six-seven vote to hire a special counsel, that we do not have duties with relation to that special counsel, and it does report to your designee. However, that being said, on projects that the city has done, Retract is an example, where we had imminent domain proceedings by outside counsel, and that was, we acted as basically the internal legal counsel for that. So however you want to do it, you can decide that it just reports to you, you have that authority, or you can ask our office to assist. So it will be up to you.
We can ask the office to assist if we need to. But I think, I would like a motion to give the city manager the authority to hire. So give me a, somebody give me a motion, or do I make the motion?
I'll make the motion that we give the manager authority to hire outside counsel for the purposes of providing representation related to medical marijuana establishments and authorization, medical marijuana establishments pursuant to our procurement and contracting allowances for him within the $50,000 threshold, that the money be identified as coming from availability of the services and supply budget of the city attorney's office, and that the counsel reports to the city manager or his designee.
Mr. Mayor, Tracy Chase, can I ask for a clarification before the second? Our service and supply budget is like $10,000, that line item. I think the correct line item would be our outside legal services. If we could have that clarification, please.
Okay, yes, your outside legal services budget.
Okay. I have a motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
I have a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those who oppose, no. Vote unanimously. There is no public hearing at 6:00. We have a public comment. Ms. Bowen.
For the record, in my words and my name, Peggy Lear Bowen, thank you for all your hard work. You've done one man's job today. I noticed that one of the items on the agenda had to pertain to fire and protection of our community and life and, and structure and things like that. And I had a concept that I wanted to give to you that, for you to mull over and think about for the future. And the concept is this, that if in each firehouse that is in a particular location, where there might be a county firehouse and a city fire, or a city firehouse and a county fire in close proximity to the opposition's, and I don't mean that in a combative way, opposition's firehouse, that you in fact make it a dual firehouse in the sense that, when you get pulled over in Indian country, you have, if you're not a Native American, you don't go to the Native American courts. You go to the court of the county to take care of your ticket. And the officers are duly licensed, or certified, or badged, or whatever proper term, whatever proper term there is, that you do have the opportunity for non-native policemen to come on in Indian country and vice versa. And this, whether that's true or not, that's my concept at this point, and that's my belief at this point. And what I'm talking about is maybe to have in a given firehouse that's in a close proximity to the other entity, to have one group of folk that come from, who are duly certified both as county and city firemen, and if, and the devil's in the details, and I understand that, but it's the firehouse that's certified in the sense that they could go to that fire across the street or, and do that sort of thing. And I know it's a lot of work with the, with the unions and things like that. But if the concept, if the goal of all of this is, I know about parity, and I know about all those other things, but if the real goal is for the protection of the community where it matters, and if we can come to some sort of dual agreement on one position in each house, and it can be filled at different, by different people during different shifts, then you could say that that house over there, we can respond to, and at the same, because we're seeing the flames go up, and at the same time, make the notification to all that we're here to help, and as soon as your engines arrive, we can back off, that sort of thing, and work hand in hand, and meet the goal to protect life and limb and structure in our communities. It's a concept, and nobody's thought of it, and it came to me, so I thought I would share that with you.
Well, the concept has been thought of, and it has been working, it has been rejected and by another agency. And I would like to correct you on one thing, and I'm not trying to correct you, Ms. Bowen, but in Indian country, if you get a ticket in Indian country, you go to Indian court. You don't go to the other guy's court.
Not, not, not insurers. That's how it worked, insurers. One other last comment, because of your previous agenda item. One thing that happened years ago is the University of Nevada Homecoming, which brings everybody back together and joins the university with the community. Their homecoming parade used to come downtown, used to come all around, and used to go back up to 9th Street. They quit doing that, and that was a further separation in the minds of the university folk of the university from town. And you might want to work with the homecoming committees and the activities to help bring the university even closer to the rest of the community again. Thank you.